It's now. Start over, Lyon County Board of County Commissioners, Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is ten thirty. We're gonna have our budget meeting today. And the agenda will actually be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board deserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restriction must be reasonable, may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards is indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. And this meeting may break between, you know, probably around noon if we're gonna break, eleven thirty to one thirty for lunch. A roll call. All commissioners are in chambers. And we'll go ahead and do the pledge. Stand. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the Constitution and the Constitution. Justice.
Thank you.
Play well.
Item three, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, but may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. I'll ask now, does anybody have any public participation? Seeing none on Zoom, nobody in chambers, we'll move on to item four. For possible action, review and adoption of agenda. Any commissioner input? Any public input? Seeing none, we'll have a motion on the agenda.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, and adopt the agenda for today.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Move on to the regular agenda. Action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. Item five, and we do have a comment by Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, say, thank you, Mr. Chair. NRS two eighty-one A dot four two zero requires me to disclose a conflict of interest. A very small portion of the tentative budget before this body may affect my commitment in a private capacity to the interest of my wife. She is employed by the medical provider that is the contractor for medical services at the jail. Her job is not dependent on approval of this budget, and her employment is not impacted one way or the other with the approval of the tentative budget. Therefore, I conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by this relationship. And because this is not a clear case of a disqualifying conflict of interest, I am going to be voting on the tentative budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So now we'll have our comptroller, Mr. Foley.
Do you wanna read it?
For possible action, approve the Lyon County candidate budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Gosh, Paulie, Lyon County Comptroller for the record. Appreciate all of your time and effort in going through this budget, which I know it's not a small endeavor to, uh, to review this in the timeframe that you have to review it. So I appreciate all of your, uh, nights where you went to sleep early because you got far away through it, then you get the rest of the way and reschedule the next day. Uh, but with that being said, I'd like to give a brief overview and then I will, as we go through, I'd like to give the board a few options on ways that we can go through the, uh, the budget more quickly or more slowly, and then let the board decide how you're gonna do it, because I do recognize that the mind can only endure the seat of bear. So we will see what we can accomplish together. So I'm gonna start out just in the executive summary, which summarizes quite a bit of what we're gonna cover. I have a few things to add, some uh, comments and things to go with that. But in the executive summary, we start off, and at the very beginning, it talks about the general fund. The general fund revenues are budgeted to go up approximately two point nine percent from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Keep in mind that two point nine percent is inclusive of moving three cents of tax rate in from the medical engine fund and bracketing production. And so that's approximately six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars additional revenue into the general fund from the medical engine fund that we're doing as a piggy bank. It's a one-time thing. It's not like we can do this every year. And the reason that we're able to recommend that this year is because since the Affordable Care Act, we are seeing a significant decrease in the Medicaid match portion of our medical engine fund budget. And with that, over time, we've watched that and we believe that we have the ability per circumstances permitting, to take three cents away from that and property tax rate, that fund, to cover that Medicaid match uh, because people have private insurance and they're not doing Medicaid as much as it ever passed within Lyon County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Foley, of that two point nine percent, what percent of that two point nine percent is from the medical engine? One point three, you said that, okay.
I did not, but I was just about.
So almost, almost half of that, almost half of that is coming from the save or reducing.
Yes. Actually, thank you for pointing that out. We, so that three cents is a one-time transfer intended to be permanent, and if circumstances change down the road and Medicaid becomes a bigger expenditure percentage-wise, we may have to take a look in future budget years at reversing that, but at this point, don't foresee that. So we'll do the best we can with the information we have right now. Just so you're aware, that was largely intended to assist in funding the four additional positions recommended in the general fund budget this year. And I will get into those four positions, but there, there were a number of positions requested of those. Uh, there were four that it's like, these are very urgent requests, and so we're gonna recommend those to the board, and we tried to find a way to fund it. This was the only way I could come up with, recommend to the board fund it. Again, a one-time piggy bank, so we knew that can't do it year after year. Um, in addition to that, there was a hundred thousand dollars that was moved into the road fund in utility license fees that traditionally went into the general. And that's the reason for that is the road fund revenues are based on gas taxes, and those are not going up as quickly as the cost of those services. And the majority of what we put through the road fund is personal and recovery. So I mean, that's really what we're putting through there. So whenever, now I'll get to a little bit more, but whenever we have merit increases, whenever we have increases in the cost of benefits like health insurance, uh, for some reason, those rates end up down here, here, I don't remember. They go up and workers' comp. Those, the road fund is not able to absorb those increases, like the general fund is, it has a rising, uh, revenue source or some rising revenue sources.
This is maybe a question I had for later, um, Mr. Foley, but is there a way that Lyon County can impose their own tax or charge on electric vehicles that goes into the road fund?
So the short answer to that is no, because we're a good one for the state. We don't have the ability without legislative action, state legislation, to do that. That is a discussion that we have run up at the legislature in the past on how can we do that? You will notice on your on your, um, D and B registrations, the legislature did implement mileage when you renew a vehicle, and so they've been studying what the mileage is, so potentially they can come back and, and look at doing exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Okay, so those are the revenues. We'll take a look at the revenues. I'll get a little bit, uh, more of the general fund, about the breakdown of the different revenues. But that's a, a high level of looking. And then when we get to the the salaries, we're looking at salaries and wages in the general fund going up by approximately eight point five percent. Now, keep in mind, it's not like that's a, oh, here's a blanket brush rule. We're doing a a eight and a half percent increase to everyone's salary across the board. That is, that would be the wrong interpretation. That includes that we have built into our personnel policies and collective bargaining agreements at two and a half percent merits slash all the other thing I would association here. That's baked into that. In addition to that, the four new positions that I just discussed briefly, and we'll get into depth a little bit more, those are included in there. So that significantly skews that percentage, uh, because of that. And who else? We have a few more increases such like, such as the first treasurer's election workers request, which we've, we've built into the recommended budget. We had an issue at the last general election. And that issue, or probably presidential election, that issue is we had people lined up out the doors, in the snow, in the rain, um, in Dayton, in firmly, different locations. And the challenge there was we didn't have enough check-in machines. We had no voting machines. We didn't have enough checking machines. We have worked on that. We, the Earl's Attorney, for Treasury Office, with your permission on the budget and states, uh, states help Secretary of State, they have added more check-in machines for the, the upcoming elections. Those additional checking machines, the additional full, full workers to operate them so that we can get the people in and into the voting party as quickly as possible and not have those lines filled up. And so that's one example of some additional costs. There are also additional overtime costs that are built into there over what we've done in the past, and because overtime your pay cuts go up, the salaries go up, and so on and so forth. So there are those pieces that are in there, but I want everyone to realize this is not an eight and a half percent recommendation for across the board increase in salaries. It is, uh, amalgamation of a number of different factors.
Commissioner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the merit increases. Well, basically, if you're living and you show up and you're not as whole a screw-up to get one.
Uh, that's for me. Only the rest of the people will get one. So if you are a member of the Sheriff's Association, that answer is absolutely correct. And yes, it would be the answer to that. If you, if you haven't haven't been fired by the sheriff by the time your anniversary date comes, you get that a hundred percent. If you are outside of that Sheriff's Association, you have to receive a meets expectations or a bill on annual evaluation to receive a salary. The vast majority of employees meet expectations. There are a handful each year that need, double handful each year that do not, and needs some additional work to get to that point, and they don't perceive their merits just yet.
You'll be, but you don't get, you don't get a longevity and a merit, right? Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, the only way you can get a longevity and a merit would be is if you were closer than two and a half percent to the top of your salary range, and your, your merit increase gets to the top of the salary range, we would go longevity to make up the difference between two and a half percent. So that you get to be close enough to. Should I keep talking?
You bet.
Sounds good. Uh, so with that being said, I would like to move on to revenue predictions that tab.
One, I had one question. It's kind of a follow-on to, uh, Commissioner Jacobson. We talked about that one point three percent, um, from the indigent medical fund. And you said, well, it's gonna handle things this year. You can't count on it after that, but we're basically counting on that one point three percent for hiring in that, in those four positions. So if we can't count on that in the future, what do we do with those four additional employees?
Bad choice of words on my, thank you for talking about that. We can't count on going back to the medical engine fund for more tax benefits. That three cents will permanently, in theory, reside in general fund and be there every year. So I apologize for not being as clear as I should be.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to the revenue prediction tab. You have a chart on the very top of the page, which you take one of the different. So you want me on a different file. There are three files attached. One of them is the executive summary, one was the budget mix, one of them is the. Yeah, I'm sure. Oh, you're, okay. Sounds good. You're going through the action, which is, it's not.
Yeah.
That's all right. All that hard work you put in them.
Nevermind. I was gonna get. I couldn't bear with, yeah, it's all right.
Uh, Mr. Foley, there was one other thing that on, on our on, on your summary here, um, on the second page where it says replace entry doors of the Earrington Administrative Building with twenty-seven thousand dollars. Things will hit it when we're on this page, um, or I'm on the page. What's wrong with the doors now? I, I don't see any problem with those doors and yet, you know, twenty-seven thousand dollars to replace, and that's pretty good chunk.
So let me, let me explain the rationale and let me review sort of those that actually came after the request. Um, so rationale is this, the front doors, you can't see them. And they're getting caged during the last twenty plus twenty-four years since they've been in, and they're starting to show their age on the outside, so they're deteriorating. Not being able to see actually, I was proven, I was gonna say. I was working a full schedule. I was working a holiday and I was here, um, working on a holiday, working on some budget stuff and some other things that just needed to get done. And so I was here, wasn't expecting anyone else to be here. So I exited out the front doors because I parked out in front. It was lazy that day. It was bad weather and I shouldn't want to walk in the rain. And so I went right out the doors and literally hit another employee as they were coming in to work on. Because they couldn't, I couldn't see them. They couldn't see me. So luckily, no harm done. But if that might have been a different person on the outside that I hit with, I'm expecting anyone to be there, and someone was there, they might have come down the steps, might have been an accident. So that is part of the rationale. First of all, it's aging, the existing doors are, if you look at them, it's starting to deteriorate on the outside, some damage of those type of things. Second of all, perceptions. And that was the process facility. Whether or not you agree with that or not, that was.
All right.
Pretty classy doors for twenty-seven grand. Are they self-opening?
Uh, I don't believe they are self.
I wanna get in the door business.
All right, all.
Okay, I will hit all of the capital off.
All right. That's fine.
Yes, I have some questions.
So on page one, we've got revenue comparisons. The only thing I want you to look at down the bottom, uh, almost the bottom of the page is two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, and you look at the percentage increase. It does give you a trend. You can see what's happened prior years, but the percentage changed and have the lower sixteen point seven five percent. That is not what our tax revenue is going up across the board. That's partially, again, a higher figure to go with the tax rate in. Uh, consolidated tax is point six four percent increase, and that's about forty-three, forty-four percent of our total revenue. You can see it's not anticipated to go up much. Again, that's the best guess from the state of both of those revenues. Let's move on to page two. That shows you the different tax rates over the past ten years between the different funds, and you'll see that there's a three cent increase in the general fund and a three cent, three cents decrease in the medical. Besides that, all tax rates remain the same. Page three just shows a graphically for the general fund, what it looks like. Uh, the decrease, sharp decrease that you see in two thousand um, three is going to move six cents of property tax rate into the, uh, senior services fund. So we'd have property tax rate funding for instead of putting utility license fees in like. So please go to page four, three graphs. The top of those graph is assessed valuation in total. The bottom is showing the trend by percentage change year to year. So you can see the trend is still up, but it's a decrease in the trend over the past three years. Go to page five. We're gonna look at just property tax revenue across all Lyon County funds. And those, you can see it again, the tops in total has gone up. Percentage-wise, overall, it's a twelve point one percent increase. They don't expect that to happen every year, but with the rate of, uh, increase in assessed valuation, we've been seeing over the past few years, that's the trend that we're getting. In theory, at a macro level, you would see when the interest rates rise at the Fed, then over time, these would start to decline, as we saw back in the, uh, Great Recession. We aren't seeing that yet. Partially, there are a number of reasons that they're, they're portraying out there. Some of them are, we still have a number of shortages in housing units in our area. The second one is, uh, across the nation, the rise in, uh, Airbnb type of properties where traditionally those would be part of the housing market. Now they've been part of the vacation rental market. And so that's making a significant increase in different areas on the fourth mountain. So those are some of the things that we look at when we see this. When we move on to page six, this is just the general fund property tax value. Again, this is clearly is a higher percentage than the regular because we didn't need tax rate in. As you can see, that percentage increase is sixteen point seven, which is good because that's thirty-three percent of our revenue, forty-four percent of our revenues going up less than percent by the consolidated tax, and the other revenue, uh, outside of those two sources is going down. So we average it all out and amalgamation, we come up again with a two point nine percent overall of which one point three percent increase is due just to that property tax transfer. Page seven shows the consolidated tax revenue. That's a pretty telling figure. The reason why you have to remind me of a story more going through budget cuts, and we have jars and jars of gumbo, gumballs that represented every department across the stand here, because we were trying to visually show to the commissioners of of what each department spent and what percentage they worked in total. And the sheriff's like, it looks like a middle finger sticking out of their mind, because I have the lion's share of those there. And it's like, yes, that happens to be it, but we didn't put it in the order to do it that way. This particular case, that year in two thousand and twenty-three is the year where we changed from guaranteed status and consolidate, S and CRT portion of consolidated tax revenue to the non-guarantee. Now, that's not like Lyon County has misty did that. That was the tier one distribution, which is where they take the six taxes altogether and put them into a big bucket. Then it gets distributed out to all the leads. So the Oregon commissioners made an election at that point saying, you know what? We are generating way more in sales tax revenue than we're getting at this point. It used to be reverse. Ten years ago, we did about four million dollars more in the guaranteed portion than what was being generated. Since the Wayfair decision at Springfield that says that when you buy stuff on the internet, a certain amount, you have to give that to the, the tax staff. Our revenues changed from that point. COVID also helped people shop home more, and so things were being shipped here, so they'd be logged through bricks and mortar stores. Um, so with that being said, our dynamic changed. We made that election. It was a irrevocable election. So when you see actual sales go down in the future years, if that occurs, our actual revenues will go down. We aren't limiting on the downside. But we're also not limiting on the upside. As you can see, that large increase that went in, but for this next fiscal year, they're anticipating that we're not going to see much of an increase uh, with the feds trying to slow the economy down with the rate increases. We also saw in December, our revenues year over year did not go up at all. From the conservative side. So we're seeing that trend of from July of this year, December and January of this year, the revenues uh, not growing as fast and actually starting to potentially deep.
Just, just, uh, historical note on that, on the Wayfair. It was actually Wayfair versus South Dakota. And South Dakota passed that law with the full intent of being sued to, to put that issue to bed. So we actually owe the state of South Carolina a, a debt for, for taking that on.
We would be in sad shape with literally has made a huge difference in positions and salaries and, since that's. Okay. We can move on to page eight. And this is when you add up, and this is over what, forty-four plus forty-three and the eight, seven percent of the general fund revenue. When you add that up, it's going up seven percent altogether. But remember, I told you the, the remaining is going down? That's averages, drops that down to two percent. So we average that, but this gives you the, you talk to revenues. Any question or revenues, we'll move on to. Okay, we'll move on to the next page, which is page nine. Capital LA. I'm just on that verge of, I need to move the table a little farther back, so I apologize. I don't wanna wear my reading glasses just to that, so. Uh, we already talked about the entry doors of the Earrington Avenue. So these are all requests from the citizens. We'll move on to the firmly contract secured parking lots. There are no lights out in the parking lot at the justice court and the sheriff's office and the security parking. And so they requested that, uh, we put that in for safety purposes for thirty-six thousand. Then there is a gate at the date. You aren't gonna see this throughout the budget, pop up in different spots. It's a, a total of thirty-seven thousand dollars, uh, to do a replacement gate that's electronic there. Seven thousand of it is what the facilities is requesting out of their budget. They're sharing with, uh, roads and utilities as well, so you're aware. Then there are a number of HVAC replacements. We've got some aging systems out there. We've been working on replacing some each year. And we've got Dayton Library, Dayton Senior Center, firmly library, and firmly sheriff's office that will be uh, are recommended to have those being replaced. And then there's a replacement truck for Janitor for sixty thousand. There's a new truck for one of the four additional positions, which is also a janitor. There's a difference in price between the two trucks because one is a full-size truck and one is a mid-size truck because the new janitor they have doing some addition or different type of work, still cleaning work, but, uh, they're working on some different projects, so they don't believe it needs to be a, a full-size truck for that positions. Then we move on to IT. Just so you know, we inherited from Anaconda many years ago, the mine here in Earrington, we inherited a TV translator site at the top of Summerville. So you look that direction, look down, you see a little peak. It's got a communication site up there. There is a pole line, and it is what Lyon County has inherited. It goes all the way up to that. And it takes power from lean heights all the way up the hill to that site. We have to actually step the power up to four hundred, uh, four hundred volts across that to get it up there and actually have one twenty at the end, step it down, transfer it to the top to the end there. We're not doing truly high voltage, but we are doing that same principle of stepping up the voltage, stepping down the amperage. Problem is that line was put in, I don't know, fifties, sixties, perhaps, nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties. It is operated with no insulation. And some of those poles have blown over in the past, and we spent about twelve thousand dollars to replace some poles that blew over a couple of months ago. This would be to go in, not replace the wire at this point, although we're evaluating that and may come back to the board with that in the future. Because there's a portion of our lease that says that if there's a fire that's caused by our line. Because there's a portion of our lease that says that if there's a fire that's caused by our line, it's the base of the fire prevention. And so this is to replace a leak four poles and a number of connectors. To make it better, ideally, we're looking into right now, uh, the ability to change that wire. From copper and putting shielded aluminum to take it up. And what any prices. But for many years it just worked and then we got it blowed down about a month and a half ago, and so we're still in the evaluation process of.
Isn't there some grants out there right now that are uh, going around for replacing to be more energy efficient on some stuff?
There are energy efficient ones, I'm not sure that they, that they work on this type of thing to look into that. But I'm not aware of any of that, but specifically, we have had the discussion of. Can we make it, take that wire down altogether and make it sufficient there? But the cost on that to do it is significant, we're probably talking two hundred thousand dollars, but then we're also having done. To the solar building batteries and take it off the grid, and you've only got four users at the site, a couple of. Uh, internet providers, a radio station and a TV.
Bringing it up in the public meeting, they're saying that we have liability up there right now, so now that it's before us. I think we need to work on solving the liability part of it.
And we will, I agree, we will be bringing you back one information. This would be initial stat to at least get one pole, it's, that's probably. It's not on the road, but if you got off early in the middle of the day, you probably touch the wires.
So we're gonna replace the pole. And you're talking about replacing the wire.
This, the proposal in front of you is just to replace the poles in this. We're evaluating on doing more and laboring that back to.
That, that's gonna be an extremely expensive project to dig up the wire and replace and.
No, because they're all on poles all the way here, yes. What we would hope and we haven't priced it, I don't know, still, uh, that cake's still baking, not quite ready yet. Uh, we're hoping that that copper can be recycled and. Uh, debris some of those possible, we will come back to.
I, I, that's what I, I thought instead we had to dig up the wires, but it's replaced.
But yeah, just from a, a cost standpoint, it makes more sense to do it both at once.
Exactly, and so. When the budget came out, we came up with that, got that estimate, we have, as soon as we have that, we asked for the, the rest of it. Uh, estimate is about four or five days more work plus the cost of the line, and so we're getting the dollar figures. Okay, uh, IT, there was a request for a new position, I'll get to that in the next page after this, but. There's a new vehicle request for that position. Building, they have, uh, the building department has two replacement vehicles, vehicles that are older and that they're used to life essentially. Vehicle maintenance, they are requesting a lift, this one again is shared. Between Dayton Utilities Funds and because it's in Dayton. And the vehicle maintenance, and that would be to put an additional lift in there for forty-nine thousand. Uh, twenty-four thousand here with vehicle maintenance, and then again, you'll see that uh, gate at the Dayton Yard, top of the building, which we talked about. Port Services has a very old uh, Crown Vic that came, they inherited down from the sheriff's office, it's a end of its useful life as well, so. Replacement vehicle there, currently Justice Court, their neighborhood vehicles, same situation. Uh, juvenile probation, there's an additional position requested there that's recommended for probation officer. This would be a vehicle for that person to actually drive. The sheriff's office, you're gonna see, there are ten vehicles broken up into two funding sources, the reason for the two funding sources is. Traditionally, in many years past, we would have been able to find all of their vehicles out of the vehicle acquisition fund. That day, ship has sailed, days past the ship has sailed, and now we're having something like that income. We, we're always a year behind, we're trying to keep everyone, so we have cash available to gain year divestment vehicles and vehicle acquisition fund. So next fiscal year after this, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, not the one we're considering funding right now. Because one of those brothels has fire damage, we are more than likely not going to have. As much revenue for these replaced vehicles that year out of that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I got a question about the vehicle acquisition fund. The decision to use the brothel money for the vehicle acquisition fund, was that? A, a decision made by a former Board of County Commissioners, is that just practice?
So I don't know the answer to, I would, it predates me by many, many years. I would anticipate when that fund was created. That it took an act of the Board of County Commissioners and using that for vehicles. Um, took an active work, so I would anticipate it's an intentional act, otherwise this is no different than. In theory, the business license. It's part and parcel of that, it's just a segregation for its purpose that the board has been doing. Formal resolution that we did at on that, uh, purpose of the fund as well. And so that, the board did formally take action, we just renewed it and allowed it. Because accounting standards changed and basically it said that we don't have a. A dedicated revenue source for certain things and some of these funds will be provided at the general fund, we made sure everything matched, so it was.
And, and then also, I know we've had discussions before where we replace sheriff's vehicles earlier than other vehicles. Do we have any data that really shows the increased maintenance cost? At, you know, whatever point do we decide we wanna re- retire them?
So. We don't have our data other than I can show you the vehicle maintenance. Repair line, I think the changes it's had over the years and we've seen a significant increase in that. Keep in mind, it's not a pure analysis because some of that's just cost CPI over the past few years as well. So, but that trend has been significantly higher than CPI, so in my mind, it definitely is due to. Increased, increased maintenance.
Yeah, cuz I, I'm just thinking something we may, we may wanna look at in. The near future here is, you know, maybe we need, we can extend the life of these sheriff's vehicles a little bit longer.
And we have that discussion as well on whether we should use aesthetic versus regular or whatever, and those, what other options we have on those. That was all part of the budget discussion with that department. The, the challenge is, and I'm gonna make ballpark statements here because I don't have actual figures to. To be able to do it, but I can tell you the discussions we have, when a sheriff's vehicle is. On the side of the road, not generating odometers moving, but running. That has issues with uh, decreased. Life on that thing, even though it doesn't show up in the odometer like it went on, if I use my vehicle, rarely do I just sit there and run it. Plus it's a hundred and five degrees, you know, right, in which case I'm. We know what we're talking about then.
Yes, we do.
Uh, and so. They also keep it on when they're going into buildings and things like that, part of the reason is because they have the whole data. Uh, terminal laptop and whatever you wanna call it in the, the vehicle. When they turn it off, it turns off the internet connection, it turns off the computer, there's a time lag from the time they hit a call. So we'll bring all of that stuff up so that it's all functioning and they have a communication back. That you would want, so that's, that's factor, so I would anticipate that for the deputies who are on patrol. And that's where the majority of your vehicles are, that we are probably close to two hundred and two hundred fifty thousand miles of engine time. On those vehicles, not necessarily wearing a chair, believe it or not, they don't drive it quite the same, I drive my vehicle at home sometimes. And.
I've been on ride-alongs.
You've been on ride-along, you know exactly how that goes, and so that's uh, that usage. Even if it's a hundred fifty thousand miles, isn't what you roll in usage on a car on the street that you're buying.
Yeah, and I, I understand all that, it's just. Yeah, we, we have made improvements in American automobile technology over the, the recent future, so. Something we might wanna look at, try to extend the lives of those, then the final question on that is. When a sheriff's vehicle ends its service life, do we repurpose that vehicle? Okay, thank you.
For the most part, there are times when it's just, that's what's gotten you.
Right, yeah, I, I, I get that, okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on, so we've got three vehicles out of the general fund, two hundred forty thousand, seven out of the vehicle acquisition fund for. Four hundred and fifty thousand, then we get down to Smith Valley Cemetery, Smith Valley. Uh, cemetery, it's recommended that we replace. The system there with a very dry water pump and add a pressure tank because right now, there's not enough pressure for some of those trip guns and. And other usage, and so that's a recommended, it's actually an upgrade, but it's a replacement, why you're replacing it, let's make it function. For twenty-six thousand. The fairgrounds, there are two items here that were requested but not recommended for funding at this time. One of them would be to expand the motion building, to add a bathroom, kitchen and subject tank to that, to increase. The ability for the public to use that and for the photographs, for an estimated a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I wouldn't be surprised if it's significantly more than a hundred thousand dollars by the time we all settle down with that. And so at this point, we just didn't feel this was the time to bring that forward to the budget. Uh, process, although it's a wonderful idea, it's not a necessity. That was kind of our combination. There's a replacement tractor requested for forty-two thousand dollars, we have two tractors out of the fairgrounds, one of them is wanted to replace within the past. Two or three years, and the other one was replaced, I'm guessing probably about fifteen years ago. Andrew and I physically went out with the facilities and did that tractor. Uh, the complaints about that was two-fold, first was you have to charge it for a couple hours before you can use it. The second was, it's, you have to use a clutch. So I think a bunch of. And you say, yes, it would be nice not to have a clutch, but it's functional, I'm talking to vehicle maintenance. I, well, I've been talking to my son who actually was a tractor, uh, he said what happened is the. The battery had corroded, and so he took the terminal off, cleaned it, looked back together, started rebuilding, so. I don't see that there's anything functionally deficient for tractor, so we have hard time recommending replacement. Moving on down to Park and Recreation, they're asking for a replacement mower, uh, to one that's reached the end of its life. The new mower is slightly more expensive because it will be more phenomenally effective in that. You can dump it, the bin that holds the, the clippings, you can dump straight in by itself into the, um. A bin instead of having to take it out and then put it over the top. While we're at it, we might as well keep workers top in mind, get a better tractor. So that's what that request is, park construction tax, that's just the grand sum of what we anticipate, anticipate we can fund next year so that we can. Uh, spend it between Central Lines and the Valley, Mason Valley.
So we keep track of that, we kind of spend the money that comes in within three-year period, so it comes in. Okay on that fund where we're not, you know.
We are, there's, with, within the next couple of years, we need to make sure specifically in Mason or in Central Line that that gets. A little bit faster, I think they're working on it right now, I have been in the work areas, but I know they're aware, as I provide those figures to. Uh, to the board at times, I provide them to Doug, uh, Homestead facilities, so I know.
Got that separated out, uh, for now, so that I can see the difference of the, between the two parks, cuz they're not interchangeable.
So, yes, I, I can get to code the rate and that budget itself. Cause it's, we actually have created what's called a sub-fund. For each one of those within the park construction tax fund, so that you can go down and see. If it has this department or sub-fund to it. We keep track of cash completely separate in there, we have that ability with our software to do that, so let's get together afterwards and. I'll show you.
Thank you.
I think possibly, you know, Smith Valley, I believe we're at like fifty-six thousand out of that, I think we're at sixty-six, we spent ten, so I think. Smith Valley Park has about that, so you still have a pretty good chunk, you know.
Yeah, I would say approximately a hundred and twenty that we've been playing Halloween's probably. Uh, Mason's minute and the rest of those. And again, this is projected, not cash today, this is projected what we're gonna get in the upcoming year as well. Which could be off depending on what growth was. So moving down to special assessments, these are port facility assessments from the, um. From the justice courts, and those have to be used on the capital upgrades, what the board has done in the past years. Recent years is allocate that towards the Dayton government complex, the. And they've done kind of a round robin between the different, three different floors, Walker River and. Farnley and Dayton, and so they, when Furly did their expansion in the eighties, they used all of the money. From all of there, uh, Walker Justice Court, when the Justice House was built, and it's all there, and then. It's tied to Dayton, so that's what the, the thought process has been there since. Uh, moving on to roads, again, that gave the Dayton Yard pops up again. They are requesting a replacement water truck and then just a replacement vehicle as well. We have senior services, these are literally just grant match for two vehicles, a little labor. Uh, twelve thousand dollars each for the two vehicles, uh, and the vast majority of that's connected, hopefully comes from in not. And then we have general counter requests, two and a half million is what we anticipate tilt to come in, not this June, but the following June. And I always recommend to the board, let's keep that off the side, let's not budget to spend it because you don't have the cash to leave. The last two weeks of the year anyway, so let's not plan on spending it, and there have been. I recall a year specifically where Congress didn't fund it, and we eventually got it, but it wasn't simple. And so, just so you know.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, um. Same question on tilt as on the, um. Vehicle replacement fund. Tilt automatically goes into the capital improvements fund, was that a board decision or is that policy?
I, it was a board decision, it's not a specific policy per se, um. Let me, let me add a little bit of information to that. We have the ability under statutes, leaving Lyon County Board of County Commissioners to levy a tax rate specifically designed for. Capital provider building surplus maintenance, uh, up to five cents. Which would generate you somewhere around one point two million dollars or so, uh, maybe a little bit more. And you could levy that in here if you wish, the board chose not to do it for a number of reasons over the years and put the tax rate in the general fund. What you see. With Lyon County is this is. Pretty much the sole place, the capital improvements fund, that we are paying for capital. We go out and build a building or do an additional building, this is where traditionally we have done it. And there, there are a number of reasons for that, I won't go into all of them, uh, at this point. But if you take a look, Lyon County, at least since I've been here, and probably before that, have saved up for capital projects. And the reason we have saved up the capital projects in this fund is because we can't afford the interest. Of all of the counties in. Nevada, all seventeen, we get the lowest per capita revenue on our family that's funded. You add up all of our, all of our governmental funds and take out the rest, so what we're doing, instead of paying. Instead of bombing like the school district does and paying interest at that time, and by the time you're done with the twenty-year bond, you've paid. Just at least half your payments of interest during that time period, we've front loaded that, so we're being principled for everything. That's a decision the board has consciously made with time to do, and that's. If we take a look at the debt service for Lake Hurst City, they pay more in debt service than we put revenue in the capital. If you go to Douglas County, they do a combo. If you go to Douglas County, they do a combo approach, they have almost as much debt service as we put in capital improvements. And then they do a whole bunch out of the general. Or version of the type of of things, and so when we take a look at it. Because unfortunately, we don't have a luxury of building a single. Human services building in the center of the county and doing that for a single justice court or a single. You guys can picture, right, we're across multiple communities, it costs us more, even though we have less revenue. To do all of those, and so that's the reason why the purpose, it's a, it's an easy thing, is it required to go into this fund? No, it is not, we can do it other ways with the dollar, that gives you the same.
Yeah, just a. An observation or or a thought, you know, I I I understand not wanting to finance things, I wish I could pay cash for everything, but but I cannot. But I'm just wondering if by trying to build up the money so we can pay cash. And not interest, are we falling behind the rate of inflation of construction materials?
And that's a good question. Right now, I would say we are not. As the interest rate that we are getting right now is exceeding five percent on my investments. And the general cost out there. Some years, it has been significantly higher than that of construction, so we haven't been seeing that for the past handful of years. We have seen it a ton, I think it's slowing down. What you're seeing, what I've noticed uh through. Through the financial information that I I give feeds on and keep an eye on. Is with the commercial, the real estate market is slowing down significantly, talking to contractors. They are getting a lot more hungry at this point, not necessarily into the big home builders. But the contractors with commercial are getting a lot more hungry, so we're seeing um more competition and potential. Okay, so moving on.
I just quickly, uh, Mission Henderson stepping out at eleven twenty two.
So we have approximately twenty five million dollars for the Dayton government complex. Uh, three million of that would be coming out of the. Out of specifically the medical, it says human services fund, I've lumped the. Medical and senior services and general engine together, but three million would come out of that because we'd be providing space for public health nurses. Mental health and those type of things in the facility, and then twenty, almost twenty three million out of capital improvements. And then there's also a course entitled safety tax that's specifically levied for the justice complex. That would be generated next year. We do have some additional improvements over time in that facility. We have showing space uh for a pod in there, we've been importing bill at the time of the built facility. But at some point, we need to to do it, we can save up the cash for that to do it, and then we have some parking. Security parking, things like that, that we're going to be looking at, changing to expand it now that the floor has been added up. So those are all the capital improvements. How to regovernmental things, not the premium to us. Any questions on this? You want to take a break or do you want me to?
Uh, yeah, we'll pick uh. Take a break till eleven thirty, it's about seven minutes, you need to get up and use the restroom, whatever.
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
The the cost of the. Uh, Dayton Justice Center. What is the total for that whole thing at this point without cost increases?
So as of right now. We're estimating right around thirty million, it very well, by the time we get all said and done, and you draw the dirt work and. All bits, then it could be a little bit higher than that.
Okay.
Right now, that's at most guess, and it's thirty million, but very much.
Okay.
Uh, so we have, as you see, approximately twenty five million set aside here, uh. Almost twenty six plus somebody from the court facilities, that's going to get you close to point seven. Um, so just have to see that everybody's out. We don't have enough money right now to build it. But over the time period it takes to build it, I'm hopeful there's a sliding of. Just like we did the upstairs in the district court, our cash on the stairs is almost the exact amount by the time we're ready to do construction.
Okay, thank you.
So it probably is another two or three years until it's funding going to this.
Okay.
Okay, let's take five minutes off, uh, we'll go till eleven thirty now.
Eleven thirty, gonna reconvene here, and we'll get back to Mr. Foley.
Okay, George, by the line of county, I'll poke the record again. I would like to move to the next challenge of page ten. And this shows the different positions that were requested in our budget. I do want to put a disclaimer here, there were a number of. Job family promotions that are included in the budget every year because they're included in policy the board has adopted. As an example, when someone who has been there a certain time period in the utilities tech. One position, and they get certifications, and they've been there for long enough, they automatically qualify based on the job description. To move to uh the utilities tech two. Those are called job families, where we have families that have automatic progression, you've got. Uh, justice court clerks of one year or two, you have. Let's see. District attorneys that may move from a, a district attorney one to district attorney two, you know, like T tech. Uh, one to a two, those type of motions are built in because they're like two and a half percent of Dayton policies and securities. Go ahead.
Chairman, if I may.
Chairman, if I may, um, so, one, when I was going through this, I noticed on the F T E here, it was five. And on the summary, it's four point one. I guess I'm not adding apples and oranges or. No, I'm saying. You're fifty times a mathematician, and that's why I was like, is it because we're just adding point one half the year or?
A handful of things here, uh, first of all, we, on the five, that's what's requested. But what we're actually recommending is four of those five. That'd be funded. In addition to that, there are some allocations that split between the funds that sometimes those allocations change. Such as on a public guardian. There is a specified person that is the public guardian, and I'm not sure the time equivalent in the general plan. And then Shayla, like he heard, gets to fill in when that person is sick on vacation or holiday. For that, she is seeing an increased amount of her time in that position. We talked about whether we should swap that for random services, and that and forth, but. Her salary allocation has increased, so you're going to see some of that. In addition. Uh, so there are some of those that are throughout the general fund budget that occur as well, not very many, but a handful. And then we also are recommending. The decrease of one full tiny political employee in the firm of justice court. A position that got added in last year's budget. As we went through and took a look at the workflow, what we have done there with the judge's. Agreement is, we've hired a temporary staff person to current here, so a multi-person. To back scan the case files, like a document management system, so that they're more efficient. Once that scanning project is ended, which we anticipate to happen before June thirtieth, that position will be on play. And because we're doing the justice, the justice court remodel, we're planning on for next year. We're hoping to relocate a little bit lower than firmly city hall. And the firmly city hall does not have a lot of space for those court clerks to sit, so an additional person there. If we can help with the technology of interim, for the year and a half it takes to construct that. They come back in the future and leave that position uh with what we do in that performance, but that's the discussion with the judges wasn't great. We don't have room for it in the next two years. We, if we get the stuff scanned, dude, we don't have as much to move out of the building, you know, we're in the firmly city hall, which doesn't have a term anyways. And we think we can operate with the staffing. So you're going to see some fluctuations, some ups and downs, but that's why the map doesn't add up exactly.
And and for the record, Commissioner Henderson came back at eleven twenty five. For the break.
Perfect. So let me walk through. There are also. Not including in the budget packet for you, there were also, again, several requests, maybe less than a handful of some positions where the department has. Came to H R and myself and said, you know what, I have a person that's in, and I'm going to pick. An office assistant position. And we think this person was a superstar employee, or even an admin assistant, they're a great employee, they do a great job for us. We want to give this person a promotion. Well, those positions, although they're the same job family, they're not a ladder. Increase like the utilities tech that was documented, which is external tech, those are restricted for. Positions, those type of job families, positions that require advanced certifications or. Or uh, or specialty fields, and so we evaluate and we said, so here's the job description. Can you please tell us what this person's doing? Well, they're doing all of these things. You know what, they fit in the job description, yeah, but they're really good employees. I agree, we like them, they're really good employees, but they don't qualify for us to. To pay them more, we're looking at equity throughout the organization. If I have a person in this department, a person in this department. Doing the same work, I can't promote this person because now I have an equity across the board, and so. We had some of those requests that didn't make it into the budget packet for those reasons. Uh, the clerk treasurer requested an office assistant to administrative system. This was actually one that was similar to those requests, but it was a slightly different. Scenario there, but we took a look at it and related, everything that person is doing. Is the same as the other office assistants in that, they may spend more time doing this task than that task. But in theory, and I'll give you an example. Uh, if employee A. Does the minutes exclusively. But is out on vacation per cycle, employee B needs to be trained to do the the minutes, and it's all part of their job description, they need to do it, so. There wasn't a rationale there that we could hang our hats on saying, yes, we need to increase that one, so that's why that one's not recommended in the budget. The sodium, we've increased square footage of the district court uh with remodel, we've also. We also have a number of projects, uh, deep cleaning projects, buffing, polishing, those type of things on floors. That we're not able to get to as often as we would need to or should for maintenance. And so that's also part of the question for this this position, and that is recommended to be funded. I T tech two, we're running the county, I don't know how we do it, we're running the county with three. Which is. Almost unheard of for a county horse, probably is unheard of. They came here and they said, we have all these projects that are backed up, and we have to start running overtime, like. We need, we are working overtime, we also need an additional person, like, oh, yeah, I did, so. That's why this is recommended in there because. It is mind blowing to me the amount of visual. Work that is there with the high first team. Every department's. Almost without fail, there's a component by T and some of them, they can't even do the job. Period, they, you just go desk in my office. Get the computer. Uh, district attorney requested an office assistant, that is one that is not recommended to be funded in the the budget for next year. They did receive a legal assistant added this. In the budget for the year that we're in right now, and we believe that this is something down the road that we need to take a look at, but isn't as pressing as the ones. Library branch manager, part of their five year master plan is to have a branch manager in every library. And over the past decade or so, we have made progressive, uh, made progress in doing. To where the urtic branch is not, is the only one that does that branch. We do have your library director. That in the past, de facto serves as that position, assumes those duties, and is located in that. At this point, we realize it's a five year master plan, but. We were trying to fund things that we had to have, have this year or not. Not things that would be really, really good to do, really, really nice to do, but I'll try to get to our assistance. We have a vehi- uh fleet services technician, this is a mechanic for vehicle maintenance, they have. I can't even count the number of vehicles that we have in addition since the last time we. Had this position, we lost a mechanic position. In two thousand and eleven, but there's never been added that. So this would get them back to the staff and they have.
Are they, is maintenance going to go down now that we're buying all their vehicles?
So, yes. Yes, the maintenance on the new vehicles should be. The no piece of it is, we're not taking care of the vehicles with it, it should be right now, and so. Going back to Commissioner Henderson's point earlier. We're having some of those that have to go out of the fleet earlier than they normally should have, because we can't provide the maintenance. Some of the vehicles don't come in until they're eleven thousand miles. Um, have on for just footage, and some of them have other issues, so. I would anticipate for the first while, once you get a new mechanic, the repairs and maintenance is going to go up. Because you have another person actually performing the maintenance on it. Over time, you're right in the area, that should level out, you know, we're not catching up on that.
Thank you, that's kind of alarming, that 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 we have vehicles, I mean. New vehicles, they seven seventy five hundred miles between oil changes. You know, especially when we're considered concerned with the life of our vehicles, we need to make sure we adhere to a really strict maintenance schedule.
That is an excellent, and that is exactly why this recommendation is.
And and then while while I have, for what, one more question, that the cost per position, that salary and benefits? Thank you.
Yeah, it does not include ancillary costs, desks, computers, those type of things, uh. Doesn't include vehicles, so let me take a look, we'll send with three cents of tax rate in for. Six hundred and seventy eight thousand on these positions, and you're like, well, wait a minute, that's. There, you only have four hundred thousand, well, yeah, there's a lot more than those minutes you're adding to the position.
I I was just strictly talking employee costs, so salary plus benefits.
Yep, good.
Good, thank you.
And then deputy juvenile probation officer, the district court requested an additional due probation. Officer, they have seen a significant increase in workload, I believe it is approximately fifty percent over the past five years in place. And so, um, we're recommending that. With that being said, any questions on that? Okay, well then, what I will do is move on to page eleven, which is the general fund summary, and I'm going to just take a. Thirty thousand foot view for you really quickly and do it, and then give you the option. Do you want me to go to my departments, or would you rather just have me answering the questions you have? As, as you prefer. So let me start with the differences between the requesting recommendations. There's a hundred and eighty nine thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Difference between what the department's requested and what is in the right minimum budget. That comes down to three lineups. One of those is in general support, which is the Naco Public Land Center Assessment Committee. And that's four hundred, uh, forty one thousand, two hundred and five dollars. That was built into the requested budget, but it was not included in the management recommended budget. I want to make sure I bring up all of these, the board has the ability to have a discussion, but we can give us direction. Uh, so again, our philosophy in building this budget is, we have to take care of the necessities. As we just talked about, vehicles coming in, we allow people to take care of them and so on and so forth. We're trying to hit those critical needs, and that was our focus on this, this one, although it is critical. That we get that full funding and all of those things are out there, we didn't include it in the right minimum budget, but definitely. Want to make sure the board has a discussion, you can tell us what your priorities are. Uh, juvenile probation, they requested a uniform allowance again this year, and what they requested was that they. Get funded the same two thousand dollars at the sheriff's office, employees, so one staff. We had a discussion on difference, again, we had a discussion on the difference between. A uniform allowance that is taxable on your W two. And we buy the stuff for you, which is not taxable, as long as we pay more directly, we don't pay sales tax on all of those things. And the difference between those, the benefits of them, um. And also that they don't have the same amount of gear that. They do have similar gear inside, inside cases, and so they came back and they said, set us sixteen thousand. We could do it for ninety six hundred, that includes upfitting that entire. And so they came back and they said, set a sixteen thousand, we could do it for ninety-six hundred, and that includes upfitting that entire. All of the uniform needed for that additional officer. And so there's a difference of sixty-four hundred in that line item between what was requested and what's recommended. I left the original sixteen thousand with a green draw. And then the last item we've covered already, that's in fairgrounds, the expansion to the devotion building. Uh, wasn't recommended for a hundred thousand and forty-two thousand. That allows a hundred and eighty-nine, six hundred five. Other than that. If the department requested that we went through our budget meetings. We agreed with what was in there. There are a handful of small items. Um. Currently, justice court is requesting to do. They're requesting funding, not. They're not seeking commission to do alternative sentencing, they're asking for work. The ability to to have the drug tests and spend things for thirteen thousand dollars to do their alternative sentencing department through their existing. And so that's one piece that was in there we left it in because. Uh, that is something statutorily that they have the ability to do, and it does make sense if we keep them out of jail to save money. So that's something we need to cut. There are a handful of little things like that. That's the least one that we can take up in there. So those are the differences, ran over to you that weren't a lot of requests, additions, or what people are doing currently. There are. Four changes. Right? After we printed the budget, sometimes you like to say, even if you're writing and get more information comes in from departments. There are four things that. I would like to recommend that we change it from the package to what is in the budget. The first one is. On the assessor. The assessor went through and double checked. The contract that we have for aerial photography. Where we photograph and stitch together for G I S. A fifth of the county each time, and it's not even a mountain each time. So, uh. When we double check that figure, there's a savings of thirty-nine thousand two hundred and four dollars. Where this year's flight is going to be less than last year's flight. And so we would decrease the service supplies from that budget service. What's that?
That I'll take it a minute.
In addition to that. I received a letter. Last week, end of last week. From. The state on the recent investigations and the contract with the state provided those in the district report. They have notified us that it's going to be thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars more. Based on our actual new situation. So. That's almost exactly the same amount. I recommend we reset my item with thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars for next year. Facilities, the Occidental lease, this is a fine one. So I reached out to them, our our lease ends of the Occidental building in Dayton. On June thirtieth of this year. Reached out to them well ahead of time. Can you get your renewables? Let's go for a two-year period with the option of the new life type thing. There's still negotiations on that. And they gave you a price, they put it in the budget, still hadn't gotten to a contract stage. And they came back and said, guess what? Our insurance company just audited. The tenants that we have in that facility. And when they saw that we have the sheriff's office as a tenant. They told us at the end of this year, they're probably to drop us. For coverage, because the sheriff's office. For liability purposes, they're, and the insurance company does not cover it. However, they did the nice thing of increasing their insurance by eighteen thousand dollars this year. Uh, in the middle, as they're going forward because of. And so they didn't allocate all of that to us, but they're estimating for next fiscal year. At this point, in the the lease terms that they're recommending, still a lot of them may increase it. With certain factors. Uh, but nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars more than what we originally discussed. So I did reach out to the insurance company, our insurance agent and said. Could you get ahold of them and see if we can figure out how to get them some cheaper insurance? And figure out if we can do that, but that's still a process, but they did come back with a lease at. Nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars more, I would recommend, but we can increase that. As well. Uh, currently just. The expansion is planned to be paid for and out of the grant funds to our world. Traditionally, we don't budget. As in general, we'll look for grants to come in the future, or some just thought of a budget when the federal grant. Since it's a large capital lake, capital outlet project, it really should be part of our. Five-year capital improvement. Um, and should be in first year because we're going to build it next year. So my recommendation. After having put the budget back together and thought about this, and like, you know what, we really should budget for the grant revenue. And grant expenditure next year, so the capital plan spreads. And there are all sorts of instances out there, calls on a regular basis from contractors, hey, where have you been in this project? Where have you been in that project? That are using that information as required. So I'd recommend in the capital improvements fund, which is where we would budget for that. When we make that change. And then. The first three items I mentioned, just an associated change potentially. Those are the recommended changes. So now here's the option. General fund. Does the board want me to go through like we've done in similar budgets in the past? Or my departments and just kind of cover every single one of the general fund? Or would the board prefer, now that I've given a high level of overview, like seen any differences? Just to have me answering the questions that you may have come across in general funds. Um. As you've done with the Mr. Jacobson's. Question, the overall. Coverage.
I don't know.
Anybody have a, I mean, I I would prefer to ask questions on things that we have. Concerns. Um, versus going over, but I'm. Hey, we're here all day, so whatever y'all want to do, we'll do.
And I'm happy to do either. I just wanted to give the option. You've all been through a couple of processes before, so you. You're aware at this point of the different departments and what's going through those budget sites. They can do it.
I wouldn't.
More detailed analysis.
I would rather go slightly more detailed during this meeting than. Would we approve?
I I agree.
Sound like plan, Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Hendricks?
I'm fine with detail.
Will be. Yeah, an over, just prior an overview, light overview is good for me, Mr. Foley.
Okay, sounds great. Do that. So with that being the case.
So one last thing, though, uh. This will probably take a while, and that's good, you know, because we need to have the coverage, but. Uh, you consider going to lunch at like twelve-thirty, so staff gets.
Um. Why don't we just order pizza so we can eat it and get out of here?
Yeah, yeah, do that.
I'll chip in and get a couple pies and.
Yeah, I'll kick in and get some pizza and soda or something. Um, so let's uh, let's look at maybe doing that, we'll. Um, maybe place an order about twelve fifteen, twelve twenty, and. Take a quick break to eat and continue.
If you're getting pizza, unless you're getting a brand new, um. Brand new vehicle that's out there, toddler ship, missing the. You may need to order a bit ahead.
Okay.
And so if you want to take a five-minute break now.
Yeah, let's take a five, let's go till uh, it will take till noon, that's seven minutes. Um, and we'll get an order.
Long, long as it doesn't have black olives on it.
Okay.
And it's back twelve o'clock noon, so we are ready to go again with the. Controller Foley.
Josh Foley, Lion County Control to the record. So on page eleven. Uh, we have the general fund summary, and it just shows you. An overview, you can see that we are budgeting the spends a little more than bringing in revenue. That's normal each year. And part two, part of it is to try and take some of the capital outlay out of the beginning fund balance and use that to fund it. The second reason is, is when we have vacancies. Uh, we don't spend all of the budget for those, and so we traditionally try to factor in vacancies. I don't have a hard and fast rate, I have approximate dollar amount that we look at. And so that's partly the reason why we budget for more on the expenditure side than what we have. We'll move on to tab number one, which is on page eighteen. And that is, you know, support departments. Uh, we have a number of items in there. Parks, nature conservation districts. And there are a number of things there. Are there any questions on this? This one, I know we do have the. The one piece that isn't recommended, which is the Naco Public Lands Assessment, forty-one thousand two hundred and five dollars.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to be honest, I'm a little myth that that wasn't included. But. I think it should be. I think we should restore it and and I'll tell you why. Um. Naco very rarely asked for additional allotments. And when they do, they have a good reason. You know, so if we're going to be a member of Naco. And we got this. One-time request for money. To create a legacy organization that's going to benefit not only Lion County, but all the other public lands counties in the west. And it's like one percent of money that Naco was pretty much responsible, not national Naco, was pretty much responsible for us getting, which was like two million dollars or something. And they want forty-one thousand dollars, so I think we can afford it. And I would like to see that put back in. So that's, that's my opinion on it.
And I believe we had a presentation on that and had voted to uh, spend that money.
I think it was unanimous put into the budget. So I I literally like to. You know, other commissioners and, because to me, if if we're not going to be a a good member of Naco, shouldn't be a member of Naco at all. If we're not going to do this, I suggest we get out of Naco period.
Well. The way I look at it too, and I want to back in there, uh. I think we need to expand our our position in Naco, i- if anything, and we should be a leader. In this whole thing. Uh, they're going to be helping us out locally for. For everything that we're trying to accomplish, but nationally. We have to. We can't be singled out like what we have been. We were singled out in national, uh, by not being a supportive county. And here we're trying to ask them to do stuff for us. And at the same time. We're not carrying our. Our weight in the, in the beginning of this. We hadn't gone as far as we did in Naco. And now that we're getting more stuff out of Naco. It's real important for me. To to show that we're, we're a good player and help with our leadership team.
I I would like to see it put back in, especially with all the. Everything that's coming down the pipe and public lands with the industrial solar and all that. This is going to be an invaluable resource to us, and I think it will be money well spent.
So.
I. Yeah, and I just, you know, since we did vote. Uh, and it was a unanimous vote on that, that we have it in the budget, I believe it should stay in the budget. That's, I think, pretty much. Marching orders on that one.
And just sort of borders where my understanding of that motion was. Put it in the right wind, in the right of the budget, and see what the funding looks like at that point. So that was maybe the. The difference there, so. Understood the direction and we'll.
Okay, we'll move forward.
But any other questions on this page? Okay.
Let me, let me look at my notes real quick.
Yeah, sorry, I don't want to take that.
No, go ahead. That was it on that one.
We move on to tab number two on page twenty-seven. The general commissioners department. And. Really about the only significant change here is the, um, completion of the plans.
Excuse me, Mr. Check, I back up for a minute.
Yes, go ahead.
Just one, one, one comment on on that, um, money for the public land thing. On on your, it shows account fifty-four one hundred. And it's actually fifty-four three hundred.
So he was. Thank you. I didn't Easter egg, I correct. Move on to, uh. Tab number two on page twenty-seven, which we department again talked about, special projects with like landfill for forty thousand, that's all significantly changed.
And Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager, I do want to just clarify that's. Both for the public lands bill and support on public lands issues. It's a dual purpose.
It's with R C I?
Yes.
Whatever we give them enough.
Any, any questions on this?
Nope.
Moving on, move on to tab number three. But clerk treasurer department, uh, again, we'll talk about the temporary salaries requested for multiple workers as we go forward. That's the only significant change, um. That I have to point out here, do you have any questions?
Questions? Nope.
Just one.
Oh, you have a go, go ahead, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. Under services, supplies, the bank charges.
Yes.
Went from. Well. I guess it went down. Actually, I thought it went up. But we budgeted a hundred and fifty-three and then a hundred and twenty this year. Okay. This, I hadn't noticed it, it actually been up that high.
Right, part of it is, we used to keep a balance in there to avoid the. Charges for the problem. We still get charged. But it kind of depraved the possibility, really see what we're doing, like. You know what? We're getting a credit of less than one percent of the money that we're doing that with. And we're getting five percent or more on the market, whatever we do, let's, let's get higher investment income off of this and pay the action fees. Because we're lucky that.
And that's when we establish the sweep account?
Yes. Okay, then moving on to tab number four, page thirty-seven, the reporter department. Significant fluctuation year to year in this one is early technology piece, it's a. Fund that carries over from year to year revenue and. Entirely under her discretion as long as she needs statute to do it. So we budgeted to spend all of it every year, so she doesn't always spend it. And then get built up.
That answered that question.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to tab number five, page forty-one. Uh, this also has a technology component, but it doesn't carry work. And it has decreased over the past few years because. The amount of, uh, personal property at Nevada Copper is decreased over the years too. And so we did talk about the decrease in service supplies of thirty-nine thousand two hundred and four. That's recommended because the areas are going to cost us less than they originally. Uh, what we've put in here. So any questions on this other than that?
From, um. Copper, Nevada copper, did we get? Paid and everything on that? Are we still working? No?
No, the current year, uh, personal property tax bill, last I checked, was still.
So the. So the services and supplies are going to go up by thirty-nine thousand roughly, down, okay?
Yep.
And they are getting fewer and fewer pieces of equipment, so that has significantly gone down. From this start progressively every year, and now we're just looking at. It's down quite low and we're not getting it, so.
Yeah, four years ago, we got three point eight million. Three years ago, we got four point three million. This is actual tax bill. It's all Lion County, it's not just the one county. Uh, that are. Over that area, then it went down to one point two million per year, the bill itself, and it's still one point two. At the moment. So the hope of that, they get funding. We'll see how that plays out.
All right, thank you.
So we'll go to tab six, seven, forty-five, and facilities department. Where we discussed a number of, uh, capital outlays that went through here. In addition to that. Uh, items that are right around twenty-five thousand or less. They've got some, some small projects, special projects where they're. Putting in security cameras and some other things. Uh, but we decided that's very. Any questions on this? Okay, it does include the addition of the the facility position. We'll move on to tab seven on page fifty five. This is human resources department. Uh, we are working on and asking for support to do enforcement or we can do evaluations. Through the software instead of having to type it out in Word and. So on so forth. So there's a small request and software support for that. I've said that very similar. Any questions? This is on page fifty nine. This is the comptroller department. Uh, once a year, he talks too much in this type of meeting. Besides that, uh, things are very similar. Any questions here? And we want to tab number nine, page sixty three. This is computer information system department. Again, a significant fluctuation from year to year is mostly um. On the capital outlay side. We did request an IT tech uh two position. Some of software support contracts are going up um. Faster than inflation. But their core pieces, we have been doing shopping to see if there are other products that we can use. But what we're doing is we've got real good products that we're using. We. To change over takes a significant amount of staff time, resources. Server softwares, uh, so. We are seeing some of this is. And then there is also a time grow communication sites. We have had equipment damaged twice from lightning strikes up there. So we have priced out the ground rain. Uh, and expand around. There's already a pretty good ground rain, but obviously that draws a little more electricity than than that originally.
God has a sense of humor.
Uh, and actually the ground rain costs less than what we're placing the equipment. Any questions? No, oh, yes.
One thing I noticed, uh, and this is probably back in sixty nine. So we opened up that IT two position. I guess my question was, is the current IT tech qualified to be the IT two? And if he is, why won't we open up, promote him and just open up an IT one?
So the thought process is to do exactly what you. Is uh, since he would be qualified to open up internally, say, reply, and then back to the position.
Right. So I guess what I was, so we created a new position. Alright.
Yeah.
So I guess it, I guess it's splitting hairs. I'm not thinking, but.
We get the exact exact same story. We're we're at, instead of asking for a promotion of a person into a higher one than. Um. And then adding new IT tech positions, just a period of simple just to have a tech two position into the budget and let it play out.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Makes sense to me.
Anything further on that? Okay.
Then we will move on to tablets and. Page seventy, this is the building department. You're going to see a percentage increase um of approximately twenty percent. Over what the existing is. And the reason for that is. We will have a community development director and the planning uh are in all positions completely filled for the whole year. We anticipate. We're excited, so. Um, that's a big change. Besides that, it's very similar from year to year, other than we're replacing. These questions. Okay, so then we'll move on to tab number one. Page seventy six, this is the planning department. Again, similar discussion on the community development director being filled and. Uh, very similar looking year to year. Any questions on this?
That that accounts for most of the twenty eight percent increase?
Well, we'll move on to tab number twelve on page eighty one. This uh vehicle maintenance shop. There is a request for fleet services technician. Again, going back to the discussion earlier, repairs and maintenance having gone up significantly. It's been going up because our vehicles are aging and we're hoping to reverse that trend as we get. Another mechanic or as we get. Uh, we do have a capital outlay we discussed previously, dating shop. Lift and electronic date. Any questions here?
Go ahead.
Just just.
Commissioner Harrison, go ahead.
Thank you. Just just to comment on that. We really need to look at our vehicle maintenance schedule and hearing to it.
And, yes. Yes, and it's not like that that's run of the mill, but. One of the challenges we're having is getting some of the sheriff's vehicles from people who know. Remotely, I would say.
Let's hook up that can of worms.
I don't want, you started.
And Commissioner Jacobson.
It's not run of the mill in that way, but there are times.
Yep, um. On the salaries on page eighty seven. I I see some of annual salary fifteen thousand four hundred eighty. Are they elsewhere in here as well? And it's a split.
Yes. They are also included in the uh the running. Because he supervises the, that person, the top one that you're talking about, uh, so fleet services supervisor. Uh, is over vehicle maintenance. He's over the heavy equipment shop. It's solid. So the majority of his work is over heavy equipment because that's his. When he comes supervising, he's repairing pieces of heavy.
So he's partially paid in each area.
Yes, and uh, there's also a heavy equipment. Or the fleet service technician too, because this one is along between those. And then you have. I think what three mechanics of a hundred percent.
Thank you.
We got eighty eighty hour pay period and fifteen, twenty, fifty, five. So we're splitting it everywhere you can to. Collect money from each department.
And some of those are also split over to um utilities as well, because we have a bunch of utilities vehicles. A bunch should pay for part of the salaries, so that's going to be valid.
I was just curious because of the law enforcement, more or less, because they have to. They have more more uh maintenance. Do they have extra vehicles that actually, so there's always room for?
Theory, yes. Reality is, yes, we have extra vehicles. Cause there's always room. Sometimes we. Depending on the ebb and flow of accidents and those type of things, we may have all those lawyers out. Out and we're just kind of on with them. Usually we have some over a hundred and fifty thousand mile vehicles or close to it. Sitting there as low as a vehicle still that could allow it. One of those would never bring the other ones anymore.
Thank you.
Approximately ten. I do. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we will move on to tab number thirteen then. Uh, in age eighty eight, this is the history internships office. Uh, there were a couple requests, one of office position, one of high school internship program. Um, neither of those were included in the recommended budget at this point. Again. It would be nice. Double visa, although they're trying to focus on it's the same thing with this. Based on our revenues showing out one point seven percent without. One point six percent.
So what's the majority of the twenty three point eight percent increase? That's a big number.
So. I am going to. Two things. One, during the year. During the year, we have changed the salary schedule for this position because we have. And so we've increased the salary scheduled. That impacted some employees from our wall, but as we've hired employees, we've hired them. We were preparing to hire the DA two position, so we did that one position. And so we're actually instead of having a vacant. DA one, we're looking to hire.
So it sounds. I I just. Get nervous when they get over fifteen percent.
Yep. Okay, so page fourteen then, or tab fourteen, page ninety six is child support. Very similar from year to year early, and that is uh two thirds of the budget. Any questions on that? We'll move on to page, or tab fifteen, page one hundred. Public guardian department. Uh, again, very similar. From year to year, other than we allocated the more shade and sound there, which is higher than the salary. Any questions there?
Does the Shayla's uh salary uh. Account for that twenty one point nine percent?
Okay. They increased counts for the benefits. I of course, we do have a piece of it that's a two and a half percent.
Okay.
So we'll go to tab sixteen on page one of four. For services. Um, very similar from year to year, other than we've had turnover. So it looks like that graph has gone all over. But we currently have all three positions filled and we did it for plenty of time here. This department has had the highest turnover of the past two years. That's fascinating. I think we've got, um, we're hoping that we have some stable. Um, processes in place there. Guys definitely have good.
And do we have a reason why they just moved throughout and go somewhere? That may be something we could fix.
So if I may.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So the. Um, supplies and services went up. Almost double. Is that the vehicle?
Uh, no, the majority of that is. Are existing people than new people that are in the positions are actually doing the drug testing.
Now I'm talking about the supplies and services, services. Okay. Ah, drug test kits. Yeah, those get expensive.
We'll move on to tab number seventeen, which is district court clerks on page one seventeen. And. Um, fairly similar from year to year. The uh, the salaries and benefits. We do have. At least the one. In line. So you'll see some of those in these that kind of see those percentages where you have a person really from district one. Okay, page eighteen, page or tab eighteen, page one twenty nine, district court. And. And we already discussed um. The increase in crecins investigations being recommended to increase by thirty two to fifty two. Or thirty nine thousand two hundred and fifty more than what's included in here. We are. We are happy by state law to pay more attorneys to cases. Um, because of change in state law, there is an ability. To. Levy an additional fee of three dollars. At the time of recording of documents. We currently do one for three dollars. We're going to go on to district court special assessments, and that's where they've been paying for some of the additional attorney costs. They're required to do, but that fund is running low. And so they've been required to. Ask for more out of this budget, kind of give them like a sort of special fees. One of the recommendations that they brought up is. Hey, why don't we? Why don't we levy that additional fee? It's allowed by statute. It's anticipated pay fees increases as we've been doing. So. We, you will hear more on that as we go through. We just have not that.
Who pays that?
Uh, anyone who reports a problem.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll move on to tab number sixteen, page one twenty eight. That's a Walker Little Justice Court. Um, I would just say a piece, again, their salary is higher than what our other elected officials are, other than sheriff. And I mean, frozen their salaries for the time period. Um, because of that and. Just trying to keep them equal. Rest of my concern is not popular. Uh, that's, we have that discussion. They understand that's a word in the issue. We not agree, but. Just wanted to make sure I brought that up, so you understand there is maybe some discussion out there. Any questions? Okay, then we'll move on to tab hundred twenty on page one hundred and three, the friendly justice court. Uh, we talked about eliminating a justice court position uh during the expansion time period. And then we talked about thirteen thousand. We'll move on to tab number twenty one, page one forty one, the Dayton Justice Court. Uh, very similar from year to year. Any questions?
Just. There's a a twenty thousand dollar increase in services and supplies? Is that software related or?
Actually, it's very similar with current budgets, but they're sometimes they're not spending it. So we got they. What happens there is they've been required to hold jury trials in certain cases. And then so they budgeted for the jury trial files. And then if that happens, we've got the budget. If it doesn't happen, we have some.
Thank you.
Have twenty two on page one hundred and six. This is a female probation. We've already discussed the recommended. Additional uh human probation officer there. And the costs uh for the new position, office supplies for computers, guests, those type of things. And then uniforms as as well. The WIDRA assessment is one that we paid to a to the WIDRA for. Uh, driving alcohol treatment program, moving it out of statute. And then China Springs levy very similar, although there is a possibility. That they will come in and ask for additional funding this next year. They've done it this last year because they. They actually have news. With that program, they're in the middle. There was new directors there or an internal director. And that position um going through and figuring out. Can we eliminate staffing? Or we look at how do we right sizes programs for that numbers? And then what is the addition cost that? We don't have the. Any questions? So very possibly. Next year, contingent situation. Tab number twenty three, page one fifty five, um, and one fifty four, public defender. We have a certain amount that we by formula that we have to find and state covers over and over that. We are at the moment in active. Discussions on the Department of Defense to change our line of a defender firm for the entire county. To a system of new series, which is having separate one firmly dating and Walker Room. And. Hopefully that will be for you within the next couple of months. There are a number of moving pieces and unfortunately, we only have myself to do it because the DA can't do it and. I'm writing up the RFQs and the contracts, you know, those are written by digits and. And the public defenders and we. District attorney and all those fun things. It's a working process, but it shouldn't affect the budget because the state reverses.
Your comment is the state should reimburse us. What is the history on that?
Data.
Okay.
Right.
Since since they re- reformed the public defender system. Which has been a long ongoing process.
And continues.
I I I was brand new at Naco when eighty KT four eleven came out. That's been a day or two.
Yes, absolutely. So this is. There have been huge changes in our. We're still instead of having a house, doing a sternbody. It's a finding.
Yeah, and and just a personal comment on it, I think it's actually gotten better. I I think the system has gotten better.
Which is good.
It's taking a. It's taken a long time kicking the streaming, because I, at first, I just wanted the county to pay for everything. So.
Yeah, likely the state is.
For now.
Okay, tab number twenty-four, updated from fifty-seven, this is dispatch. Um, big change, we've allocated the lieutenant to this department solely, and so providing groups is the one that's left that, so that's in there. It's anticipating the temporary assignment as for a short term, temporary isn't really a challenge for that. Short term assignment to get everything functioning the way they want, with the turnover of somebody who had a burning nurse with accounting, and so making sure we're uh getting everything that should be there, and then at some point, we will fill that vacant position.
Is the huge increase in percentage, is that due to just more staff finally? Just for one person?
Four hundred thousand?
Uh. And the vacancies. So we're comparing to the current year, which would tell us.
Okay.
That's assuming they're all filled, which, right now, they are
What to say, if the burden for a lieutenant is three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I'm in the wrong job.
Yes, it's not exactly that.
With benefits, it's all under two hundred, but it is a chunk.
It is a chunk.
Maybe I don't want to be a cop.
Tab number twenty-five, page one sixty-one, we have panel of the floor department. Uh, we continue to have a record members of panels of shelter right now.
And afford pet food.
Luckily, all of the pet food is done.
No, I'm a people.
Yeah, we're having it, it's a challenge, because when we built the shelters, significantly higher capacity than we have before that. And in the past year or two, we are housing, it's significantly more than one dog and. So, they're busy all the time. And that doesn't include yourself, so it's just taking care of that.
So where's the increase coming from, uh, is it, do we know?
Here's my, what I'm hearing out there is with the COVID habit, everyone wanted it.
So, so are services that we do there, do we do that for Fernley and for the cities, but do we do that? I thought we did that for uh Douglas County, uh, not Douglas, but Story.
We do not, and we used to.
Okay.
At one point, we had a dedicated killer to the story builder, they can come drop their dogs off. That sees the number of years. So it's literally the county at this point, yeah, city apparently, the last I heard, it was plenty over fifty percent. Meaning, at least fifty percent of the animals were coming from seven.
They they have an active dog catcher, don't they?
They actually have a system that helps with clean the shelter. I asked when we did the agreement five years ago for two days a week, and I'm like, well, we can do one, and I'm like, anything's better than what we have right now. It's, they're, it's a lot of sort of nature, and it's clean, and and in good shape, and when you have a outbreak, a dog comes in, it's horrible that you don't manage this through. That's a lot of. So, they work, so they pull together and try and do it, the contract is up for renewal when you buy it, city currently. Currently, what we, they pay us three thousand dollars a year for the contract, and they provide one.
So, three thousand dollars a year, no matter how many animals?
That's why I was asking earlier about where where's the influx coming, because if it's in within the county, or they're actively they've got a problem, and they're, they're actually going and collecting them with the active dog catcher. I'd kind of like to revisit that a little bit of when it comes forward.
Unfortunately, that came not long after a meeting, before I realized the contract was due with the city manager, I'm like, you guys are making a really good deal, the county is is really subsidizing, but uh, for that, because that's a hundred percent city of firms responsible. City gearing will take fair or unfair, there's, um, and I'm like, we don't want to change that. We want to continue to work well with the city, I do work with the city. And then I, they're like, in a contract, soon as we do, we want to make change, I'm like, well, yeah, the changes I wanted the last time you talked it. Like, you just said you didn't want changes, I'm like, that's what I get for not thinking for everyone else.
About eight bucks a day.
Yeah, that that contract needs, yeah, there there needs to be a per night for animal charge or something, I I know it's complicated, but.
It becomes complicated, I, perhaps for the next renewal of the contract, we need a lot of incidents, but that's something that'll be between you and them, and they've been working well with us, we've been asking, can we use the friendly city hall for for courts when we're out of friendly justice court, and so far, those conversations have gone well. I think at a staff level, we've worked, tried to work well with them, and I think they've given in places, and we've given in places, and this is one of the places we, so, just something to keep in mind.
Uh, being that they're little doggy jails and everything else, is there anything for our judicial system to help with the cleaning? What alternative sentencing?
So. So it just depends on all of them, they they manage a big system, sometimes you don't want someone to.
Right. They're doing the community service for her, he's in.
Anything further on that?
Nope.
All right.
Okay, uh, tab number twenty-six, on page one sixty-six. We have the sheriff's, uh, I say department, the sheriff is in office, and I realize that. In my budget, I have different departments for the different functions. And so this is uh mostly your patrol, not the jail. And so, there was a one-time increase in furniture, uh, for security for the building next door, things. Uh, that won't recur, part of the reason why this percentage wise isn't very much an increase from year to year is we moved the lieutenant over to
Dispatch.
Over to dispatch, and then you've got movement back and forth into the jail on a regular basis. It's a fluid thing, if you take a snapshot in time, you have more people in jail when it's over here, and you take a snapshot a month later, so those people move from jail over to patrol. They have to manage their business, and that's why you can see as much of a change here, so. And with turnover there, uh, like sometimes you're replacing a person that's been there for twenty-five years, and someone is breaking, and it's sort of seen that
And ju- just just to comment, if I may, Mr. Chair. Um, still, I have issues with the vehicle acquisition fund and how it's funded, but that that we'll discuss at another date.
Point taken. Thank you. Move on to tab number twenty-six, on page one seventy-five, this is emergency management.
Twenty-seven?
Thank you. Uh, emergency management department fluctuates for some reason with the amount of uh federal grants that come in, right, if we're doing all of the flood prevention work, and uh, all of the uh, the federal grants that flow through during that, you'll see spikes from year to year, and then urban funding some of those sub recipients, passengers, and ambulances, sure, to, you'll hire this person. Any questions on this?
Yes. Kid, uh, the salaries and wages been decreasing in anticipation of partial federal funding. I get really weary when we're funding positions with federal money.
I I don't disagree with you, other than this has been a very stable source, may fluctuate slightly, but here's the challenge. We just received a grant from the federal government to cover the emergency management salary for last year. Under federal law, you cannot use those monies supplanting the costs. We budgeted a hundred percent of our salary last year, we can't use any of them, even though it's allowable in.
It's a planting.
And they never did their funding until like two years later, it's on our own, which I think is a federal violation first. Actually, I only must have this. Those discussions, and run those up the chain, and everyone rattles them, and they're like, well, yeah, but we don't have a veteran else, you're out there. It's not working, regardless. This is the only way to get that salary partially funded, is not to budget for it.
Okay.
And that's a recommendation, yes, could it come back to bite us mid-year, absolutely, it could, um, but to maximize our resources and use the money we best can, this is.
That that satisfies me. Me too, but that's the way the game we got to play with the federal government, and that's the game we got to play.
Okay, tab number twenty-eight, on page twenty. Fairly similar from year to year, again, snapshot in time, employees between jail and and sheriff, so this is where we're at, and it's a snapshot. Any questions? So we'll move on to tab number twenty-nine, on page one eighty-seven. Search and rescue, um, a little bit of a decrease from, or increase from year to year. Is what they replaced, uh, we've kept them fairly level for many years. They've understood that it's in years, but this is important for them, it's fine, it's fine about all of them. Any questions here? And most of this is just the one day equipment, or what you're using. Tab number thirty, on page one ninety, sanitary supply, and the items that never get changed from year to year, is the uh, upgrade, replacement of the Smithout metal. Any questions? Now, we'll move on to tab number thirty-five. One hundred and forty, one ninety-four, consumer health, this is entirely just a contract service the state provides. Look to take in an house and society to do next, as opposed to doing that. Number thirty-two, on page one ninety-six, public health officers, this is literally for public health officers, the contracts, doctors, doctors, to sort of. Page on the thirty-three, or tab number thirty-three, page one ninety-eight. Well, detective services, VCF, this is provided by the state and Chinese service. Again, without discussions, and we want to take this over internally, and the answer came back, uh, thank you. Page number thirty-four, sorry, tab number thirty-four, page number two hundred, library department. To discuss the request to upgrade for somebody to have a library, a manager position. All of the branches, at this point, it's not working with the funding. There was a fluctuation in the computer line item over the years, where they were getting ready for this eleven. Um, so all the computers, they finished that process. Any questions there? Then we'll move on to tab number thirty-five, things to remind, fairgrounds department. Um, fairly similar from year to year, other than some projects, one-time projects and federal funding that we have. Or we read it as, like, coming this last year, and that mission, and those type of things. Uh, they had requests, and again, there was a request for a couple capital projects.
That's true.
Yes, go ahead.
Has there been any discussion anywhere about turning this into an enterprise fund?
There hasn't been, because there, we currently, on the revenue side, don't even anywhere close to doing it. On the revenue side, what we see is most of our incidents. Occasionally, you'll have a dinner by Ryan's Club, or or a nonprofit out there, but it's not like there is a that we have a demand that we can raise the amount significantly to actually cover the cost of of those facilities. I wish we could.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Yeah, if we had sufficient fee revenue coming in, absolutely.
Yeah, because to, to me, the the fairgrounds and the fair, that should pay for itself, if at all possible.
So, just so the board is aware, we pay for fairgrounds, I'm free of it. So, let me, out of the fairgrounds department, this is a budget under facilities. Where they go out and do repairs and maintenance, out there, and they're able to take care of uh, some improvements, they there are some things that are dilapidated and need repaired, and that's what this was. Then you have the fair and rodeo, the fair and rodeo fund is strictly, we are going to operate the Ryan County Fair and Rodeo Events, and manage the fair. And if that exists, all of the revenue generated that event goes back into, meaning we spend as much as we bring in, most years, some years we show a little bit of profit, some years we show a little bit of loss. But that is really a fair working, running that event for all of you. And then out of the rent tax fund, we have taken five cents of the six cents this levy. And we use that, because we don't have, try not to use it out of the general fund, but that also covers repairs and maintenance.
Did I see in there that we're buying the tra- on, we're not buying that tractor for forty-two thousand?
We're not buying the tractor, because it was requested, we're not writing.
Right, oh, because how often would it get used?
They use really regularly. Uh, facilities, when they're setting up chairs, or moving chairs and panels, and all those things, right, the different things that happen out there. They, they do use them fairly frequently, not like an everyday occurrence, but a year plus. But they get used through probably July and August, they're used almost every single the rest of the year, not so much, it takes, it's amazing the amount of work that the fair board puts in, I have no pay.
Right, I I get that, I just.
That sounds like a nice machine. But, but i- i- if I, if I, if I may, um, yeah, I I I think this is a valuable asset to the county, our fairgrounds. Uh, I think we may be able to generate more revenue from it, this, this is a different discussion, obviously. But I think that's something we need to look at, because we have a facility, like you said, is only used, not used a whole lot, but it costs. You have to maintain it year round.
It is, surprisingly, it's few times every.
Yeah, but.
Right now, but they are events that aren't.
Right, that that's something we we may want to look at in the future, is what can we do to derive more revenue out of our fairgrounds?
That would be a awesome.
So who is our tourism director right now?
Other duties has assigned to the county manager.
Okay, any more questions?
We're a new guy, yeah.
We want to tab number thirty-six, on page two thirty, and this is for parks and rail. Um, there is a side-by-side thing requested, uh, for efficiency purposes. Uh, we talked about the mower previously, water service, um, cost of. Any questions on this?
I brought it up in the past, and I don't know if it ever went anywhere, what's happened, but they did have a, a well out there at at the high school, right next to this thing, and have we ever gone into to something to where we can actually pump untreated water onto that field? Because I know, I sit on, on the Silver Springs Mutual Water Company, I know what we charge and how much money we're, we're putting out there, you guys are, the county's putting out there. And it's treated water.
I'm gonna put a story next to that.
Yes, anything else?
Have we, have we looked in the fake grabs?
I I should tell you stories that the state put on these.
So we talked about.
Blisters on bottom of the feet.
And we can talk about the ball fields out of sparks, too.
Okay, so with that being said, that's pretty much the The general, um, any questions, concerns that we have?
Any questions? No?
Do you want me to keep on moving forward? Do you need a break?
You want to take a break? Pizza will probably get here pretty soon, so why don't we take a break from the pizza this year?
You may want to check and see when it will be. I've had an experience of waiting a couple hours.
Well, you guys have probably a lot of pizza.
Yeah, right?
We may not be here in a few hours.
Your guests left before the pizza arrived?
Nothing yet. Okay, well, then let's go ahead and take about a five minute break. We got to scratch. Right, five minutes is up, reconvene and eat while we're doing that.
Okay, Josh Boylan, Lion County Council Director. Hopefully it's interesting, enjoy yourselves. And all just keep talking until you stop. So or until I run out, but hopefully it happens soon. We'll go to page two twenty, which is the park construction tax fund, and we have talked about that, that we've budgeted to spend. What's in there? We're trying to spend it over a three-year period ideally. The question is for Central Line, how much is next year? Approximately one point two million dollars if I go to page two twenty-two. And then. For Mason Valley approximately ninety thousand dollars and for uh Smith Valley approximately. Uh, eighty-two thousand dollars again, if revenues come. They. We're just projecting whether it'd be a building slows or increases, those are just our budget reasons. We'll move on to page two twenty-four. Which is unemployment compensation fund. We set aside money many years ago. In this and we're just spending a little bit down as we go. Luckily, we haven't had high unemployment since the Great Recession, and so. We're only spending a a little bit each year, estimating about five thousand a year, but we're budgeting all of it just in case we need. We'll move on to page two twenty-eight, room tax funds. And we talked about the forty thousand here for the Lion County Fairgrounds, eight dollar bed center, and that's five cents of the tabs, the rest of it. Pays for average night and tourism in Lion County. Part of it goes to the state. Going back to Commissioner Keller's question, an interesting story, when I was out at. County Fiscal Officers Association in White Pine, they did a tourism. Uh, person in White Pine did a presentation, all the awesome things they're doing. Uh, for tourism and accounts and. And when I'm like, how much is your budget? He goes, two million dollars a year. I'm like, where do you get that? He goes, from hotels. From their room tax there. I'm like, how much we has any hotels in here? We can find a lot more in the way of tourism.
Just trying to think of all the hotels in White Pine County.
Oh, most of them are in here.
Well, yeah, right? Oh, yeah, that's true.
They they stay pretty busy.
Who uh, who is their director now?
Okay, one of those things I just love since.
Two million dollars, you better.
True. Okay, so page two thirty-three, County Stabilization Fund, this is normally referred to as a rainy day fund. We have, um. We have approximately seventy percent, so what are a lot of balances in this fund that we're putting into it? So we have increased the funding over the past handful of years when the fund was going fairly well. With Cineos coming and everything else, and so. We are not putting additional money into it at this point. But we have a balance there in case things. Move to page two thirty-seven. Page Domestic Violence Fund. These are generated by energy subsidies and the passing of the.
No, no, no irony there.
State level. So we'll move on to page two forty. I think we've talked about this a few times, the April acquisition fund. Um, it's received revenue from bought licenses, we got seven weeks. Anticipating dropping the fund balance by like. About a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then we'll move on to page two forty-six, the Fair and Rodeo Fund. We discussed this in content previously, which is they put on the annual event. And they do an amazing amount of. Move on to page two fifty-two, I would be asking for questions, but I keep looking up the next two, and so I'm just moving on and stop leaving.
Don't worry. Yeah, we're not shy.
Page two fifty-two is the Justice Court Special Administrative Assessment Fund. There are a hand or three different adminis- or assessments here that they collect. The legislature saw fits to put more funds under the control of Rob and General Fund and revenues within these. So the courts have to say, well, they spend the money, but they're still restricting the statute. The majority of the money in this fund is the facility assessment, which currently is being allocated. The board is allocated towards. Means capital improvements. And. Page two fifty-eight, the District Court Restricted Fees Fund. These are a number of different fees, similar concept as the Justice Court or the District Court level. And again, this is one where we've been spending those down on attorneys. And someone's going to come out of General Fund and. To the board, we're going to adopt a more limited levy, additional three dollar fee, we did add number seven here. To cover that. So that will probably come forward soon. Page two sixty-two. Juvenile Probation Administration Assessment Fund, this is a. Uh, this is your work. When the kids are doing work on the side of the road, they have a coordinator. That's what funds, this is gets funded mostly. Ongoing revenue sources are mostly for juvenile. Times that they receive. The state is increasing out of those fines over the years, so. We have funded a transfer from the general funding in here, we're trying to do it about every five years from last year. Or for the current, going forward, you should need to. How long we do, it's the salaries for the coordinators. Page two sixty-seven, Library Gift Fund. Self-evident, some regression of the library working for students, I don't know what this is going on, they've been spending on. Most currently on their updates in the five year. Page two seventy-one is the mining claim map. Whenever mining claim map records, so there's a fee that's charged, you go to the response, it's entirely under. The control of the record or team or anything in their office. It is building up a little bit at the time. Uh, page two seventy-five. Nine-one-one surcharge fund. Help on surcharge, we are paying for. Phone lines and dispatch and mobile data. Uh, terminals and members, sheriff's office and.
But not body cameras.
Not nobody.
Uh, we we took a run at that in fifteen.
Exactly, no body camera, but it also provides, it's not just. The county itself, but we also provide these services for the fire districts, so biggers and brave. Uh, we'll move on to.
Well, there was one thing I was going to mention here. You know, we discussed the fact that the sheriff's deputies with their computer systems. Leave their cars running. And yet. We haven't. Thought anything about battery backup so that they can shut the cars off when they need, but keep the computers running. Which is basically another twelve volt battery and a backup system that gets charged. Has there been any discussion about? Saving, I mean, how much gasoline we burn up just sitting there when they go in for an hour to do whatever. We've got to come up with something with I T and with stuff, and this could possibly cover it with this nine-one-one.
I have had multiple discussions on that, on that exact same concept, why don't we put in the battery to cover these things and some of the. So I will continue to have those discussions, I think is a great idea, I've thought it's a great idea. Uh, again, perhaps with a traditional version of the repatriations, which is happening to save the benefits and those, at least on a trial basis. It's a little more tricky than just putting the battery in because you have to tie it all in by consistent.
It's not that tough.
I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying it's a little more complicated than just setting that. There are some vehicles that is built in.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so moving on to. Page two seventy-nine, Animal Control Donation Fund. Again, self-evident donations that are received by animal services. The majority of the balance in this fund is from a. An estate that donated towards space and near year present event services. Any questions there?
Yeah. Yeah, we get like a. People that doctors or veterinarians coming in and doing services and is that kind of mankind and is that reflected in this or is it not?
So. It's not reflective of this, we. We pay for them when they come. We have the surgical rooms there, I won't pay them, it's not their full wage, but they pay them a couple hundred bucks, I mean, they do a shock. Uh, the spanner for the community, not just the space of the leaders or the. Any animal being adopted has been. Which are expensive things, it's amazing to much. It's hard to give a good an area. Any other question? Then let's move on to the cooperative extension tab, which will be. This is a one cent tax rate that we have to do as a minimum, we're doing the minimum required by statute. Universal Nevada Fund of Extension runs the program as the employees. On that plus we have our own. Any other, any questions on that? If not, we'll move on to the next tab, which is a road plan on page two eighty-eight. Again, we talked about moving an additional hundred thousand into this fund and the utility license fee revenue from the dental. Um, just so everyone's aware of the action help we're doing that. These roads are maintained in the unincorporated. So City Firmly, City of Yarrington, we don't pay anything out of this fund for those roads. But we are, um. The utility license fee revenue is generated only in the unincorporated areas of county cities. So we're matching revenues to where they're being spent. So city, the people in City Firmly, City of Yarrington aren't paying the cost. So at least through. At least through the.
So when you're coming up with your budget and your projected amounts that are coming through that, and now we're. We're looking at the news and it's going to say that gas is going up, which. Every time it goes up, this increases. No. Okay, not a percentage. Thank you.
And and we're not indexed either.
No, there are handful of counties that maybe two, yeah, that are indexed Washington.
Washington, sorry, that's why. Gas in Washoe County is about sixty cents more a gallon.
And so they have indexed theirs on because their citizens have asked. Shouldn't say ask. Those counties ask their citizens, do you want better roads and we want paid for it? And the answer came back, yes, we paid to spend this. But that enabling.
Theoretically, when gas goes up, we get less.
When gas goes up. We aren't getting any additional.
People tend to drive less when.
Yes, yeah, if you look, usage goes down when you ask to go to the. Any questions on this capital outlay here is a share of the cost replacement. Okay, if not, we'll move on to page two ninety-seven. This is the road improvement fund, this is a gas tax that's. Free levy. At this time of the building. So when someone builds a permit, there is a tax. That's levy according to state law that is the end and it goes into this fund, which needs to be used for. The amount that's generated in the cities. Going to our T C fund, the amount for the county goes into this fund, it's not in the various directions. That's it. We traditionally use it mostly for capital and road material. Capital being the water truck replacement, it's listed next sprayers. And then road base travel.
I did not realize a water truck would be two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, it's a truck frame with a tank on it.
And the sad thing is that's a truck frame with a. Steel tank that the rest of the time.
Some kind of polymer.
Can can they be transferred from truck to truck?
Usually the steel tanks. Occasionally depending on the age of vehicle and. Move it over and the metal fatigue over time is a challenge. So we have done it a handful of times, maybe that's, we've done it some in the twenty years I've been here.
We move vehicles from other, uh. Like fire or airport or anything like that, where they need a water truck, but they don't use it. Like the uh road construction, do we transfer trucks back and forth as far as. Once we're done with the lifespan, there's still life in it?
Uh, so where, I don't know the answer. I think I do, but instead of giving you maybe something that's on. So move on to. The next tab, which is our T C funnel, page three oh two. This is a nine cent gas tax that comes into here. Uh, countywide, and it's a five cent diesel tax that comes in here, countywide. And then that gets divvied out and I have some funds here like the park construction tax, so we have it split out between. The cities, they get their share based on their opportunity of assessed value. And then we also have, I talked about the. The road construction tax, time of building, whatever they collect in their entity. In their city. They write and check to the county after they receive it, they write in the next month or quarter, we put it into this fund on the R T C board. Uh, the way the statute is written on that, and those, the both cities. What we try and do here as well is save up cash and have the cash there and go. Instead of doing. Uh, let's go to page, or the next tab, human services on page three of six. I debated on whether to put the opioid settlement fund under human services or not, because it's technically not a human services function. However, the reality is, is the work that we're doing with opioid money is. Almost all of it is currently being allocated towards some type of function of the human services. So that's why I put it here, in theory, this is. Different settlements that we receive from opioid manufacturers and distributors and wholesalers and all of those. Different people. We anticipate having more in time added to this, we have a slum right now and we keep adding them every few months. Uh, so these projections, we may actually do more than this, but we're currently using it. Shango has brought forth different plans to the board over the years, saying, well, he's for this purpose and that purpose that fit within the criteria of the set. And that's what this. Any questions on?
You have a question? About how much money is rolling in? From the opioids.
So next year, we're looking at two hundred and fifty-four thousand. This year, we're looking about five hundred thousand, some of them are like a big lump. This year, we're looking about five hundred thousand. Some of them are like a big lump sum at the beginning. Some of them are. Breaking out over time, some of them were born, but beginning less than, more than, less than. Really depends on settlements. Some of them are bankruptcy, some of them are legal. Let's go to page three ten. This is the end of general engine. Was based for all engines. Did I miss mosquito? No, I skipped.
No, that's going to come up in the next, um.
I'm lost.
That's three ten.
That's all we've done with that tab. Of course she does.
General engine funds, um, it's got three cents of tax rate and. And majority of it, as we've seen over the years, is funded federal grants and these taxes. Usually about two thirds of Monday's.
The, are, are we mandated to use the marijuana revenue in this fund?
That's important city.
Good to know.
The, the thought process when we originally did that was that, um, a lot of the services that were. We, we saw an increase in services. Moving on to page three twenty-four. That's the medical engine fund. This is the one we talked about. You've got three different components of tax rate. You have a cent. There goes for state supplemental fund. You have a sentence to have for state any accident fund. It's actually many for NATO. We sometimes get parts of that back. And then we have eight cents for the state medic, medicated, I put Medicare, so it doesn't want to. Should be Medicaid. I apologize. Um, the recommendation this budget is a drop that from eight cents down to five cents and the five cents there are total of seven and a half cents. That we need to use for. And then there's three million out of this to be budgeted for the baby government center. Any questions on this? Which is the senior services fund. This used to be called the silver and gold fund until we put a tax rate in and everyone's like, why are we investing in silver and gold? Uh, that was an old program for the seniors was mainly. So we changed it senior services fund. And it has a tax rate of six cents. Uh, very somewhat near and here and authority over this funding comes as better than brands as we go. And there is capital outlay just to match between.
Why does this one have a contingency and most of the other ones did not?
Because this one has more fluctuation. In theory, any governmental fund can have. That would be, have a contingency in all of the funds. Because many of them, there's rarely a, a need for contingency. This one, there is no. There's one in general.
And, and what am I getting out of this? Sustained your citizen.
So if, if you're a senior citizen, there are a number of programs Shay will probably go on a month more than I do, but you've got house. To try and, try and keep them on a roll instead of having. Of course, you've got transportation, medical appointments. Um, your senior centers themselves. And I'm sure I barely scratched the surface of what goes through. Those are a lot of. Because it's a lot more expensive on. The other side of the, we still have to. A lot more expensive than. And they don't want to leave. When we need it out to a vacant agent places. That's the idea. Shay was a lot more. We'll go to page. I'm going to skip over a version that I'm on. I hope you read it because she has. Move on to page three fifty-three. Which is the senior services donation fund. Uh, and that is the fundraisers, the individual. Fairies, do you see there's thrift shops and things that. Senior centers and fairies and that. And they raise it so that they can have events and have fun senior programs. And that's on page three. Any questions on that?
Well, you just noticed that, you know, estimated thirty-three and requested a hundred and eighty-two thousand. What's?
So we're just carrying over from year to year. We had a donation from the state. That's a large piece of that.
Right.
So with that being said, I'm going to shuffle. We're gonna skip a couple of tabs because I want to come back to those when they actually reconvene. Instead of going through each one of those and coming back.
Well, we're done with the general thing, right?
We're, we're waiting.
I, I just think we need to take care of item five before we move on.
Item five is all over. So I've got utilities, I've got capital improvements. Those two are allowed to do.
Did you have questions? Think we might be cross passing, passing by or?
No.
Okay.
It's just the way the book's organized. It's.
I, I will change that next year.
I won't care. You can do whatever the hell you want next year.
I, I, after we put it together, I'm like, you know, it would be so much easier.
Of course, I might come back just, just for this meeting next year.
You got, you got three minutes. Yeah.
On, on each agenda item.
That's true, yeah.
That sounds like a challenge.
Really quickly, while we move on to town, the capital improvement stat, which is like four more than. On page three seventy-four. We've already talked about this under the capital outlay, the one piece that we haven't talked about, which is that Dayton government center, justice complex remodel. Um, one thing we haven't talked about is every year we allocate two hundred thousand dollars to the cities. Hundred eighty city firmly, twenty thousand city nearington for roads. We used to have a tax rate this time when it did. We shared it with, actually we have a tax rate in the road improvement for the road fund. And we would share that tax rate. We took the tax rate out, put it in the general fund because. We're having a hard time keeping people through a recession and made up for by, partially made up for by doing the. Two hundred thousand in cities. We also made up for it by. Lobby of legislature and getting passed through voted people five cent decent tax. So there were a number in road construction tax. Number of pieces to replace that gas tax. So really, you have the public safety sales tax that's going towards the public safety. Complex here for not only that, it's, uh, finishing Sheldon space over time. You have a Dayton government complex and then you have the funding. And that's.
Wanted to ask you about the, the finding we go to the cities for roads. I remember we talked about it. Well, I didn't talk about it, but. Kiyomi did a long time ago and we put money in there, but they were deficient at the time. We, we needed to help them. Has their rate, have they, has their revenue gone up or is it staying the same? As far as the need for the two hundred thousand or is it the two hundred thousand, uh? Is there a reason why that's there is what I'm?
So we. In theory, it costs more today than ten years ago. In theory, we, there is more money. It costs more than it used to. At a minimum, we have this in here. We've tried to augment with gas taxes on the other sides. And so. Yes, if I, if we had sufficient funding that we could, it would be nice to. To the cities, but. As a minimal, I don't think.
Okay, is there funding going up for the cities themselves? It seems like it. They would be going up. That's why I was asking why about the two hundred thousand.
If not, we'll move on to line. And you can see I put a summary on the front page of the capital projects for this, uh, next year. The rest of it is just operational. Again, we had the, there's no new positions. And, and no request for Dayton water or Dayton. Most of the stuff, there's general operations and a handful of capital. Put a replacement twenty-five thousand inch ventilation sixteen thousand. That's just a portion of it. Again, that gate of Dayton yard south plant pops up here and the vehicle made. Any questions on this? There is a five-year plan. Uh, on that capital, which is on. Three ninety-five and three ninety-six. Showing the different projects coming up. Anticipated, we'll reduce it as a lot as far as anticipating the times that happen. You have that? Any questions on? If not, we'll move on to page three ninety-seven, that is the Dayton sewer fund. Very similar from year to year with the exception that we have finally drawn down a twenty million dollar bond. And we did for whatever one day was mentioned. And so now we're going to start paying principally. We add up all the principal things, which don't show up. They're balancing. So they don't show up in your, your profit and loss, which is what this is. When you take a look at. At what you have here, they have a profit of about two million dollars, but you're paying all twenty-five nine million plus. Approximately and just principally. So it's pretty close to breaking. And then the capital projects, uh, we've got the completion of all on a sewer plant on this five million dollars, gravity line replacements. Uh, highway fifteen Dayton Valley Road of three point six and two point seven million. Age back replacement, the delivery replacement we talked about, replacement David and South plans. Any questions on this? If not, then we have to take you to. Pages. Four oh eight, fall night, which is the five-year gap. And, and first, usually there's some of that summary sheet and the rest of them show projects going out. Any questions on? With that being said. Now I'm complete with. Item five A. Here are the changes that are. To make again, this recap. That the assessor would decrease services supplies by thirty-nine thousand two hundred and four dollars. District court, we would increase incentive investigations and services supplies by thirty-nine thousand. Facilities, we're going to increase the leasing cost by nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. That's in the general fund and we add the, um, the forty one thousand two hundred and five dollars to the Naco Public Land Center assessment. Cost as well. Those would be the changes in the general fund. And then in the capital improvements fund, the budget, seven million more in grant revenue and seven million capital outlay. And so those would be the recommended changes that I, we have discussed that I would recommend and before we discuss.
Any comments? Any further comments? Any public comments? Nobody rang up to the. Right, nobody in Zoom and, uh, send with that, so.
I, I, I do have one comment.
You have, go ahead.
Yeah, well, pre- appreciate all the work you guys have put into this. Did a lot of work. I am a little disappointed, of course. There's nothing here from Mount House, but that's a battle we'll fight another day.
Okay. Any further comment? Go ahead.
I do appreciate how you went through it this time going. Each, each item as we're going, because it, it also tells me what's coming up. Not only year by year changes, but what's coming up and prepare. So I, I. Look forward to having it at this format again the next go around. Really appreciate it.
It's all the tabs in the right place.
Well, eventually, yeah. Um, no, I, I appreciate that too, because you know, I've dog eared and highlighted and made sure the questions were answered and. I think everybody else was pretty diligent and, uh, doing the same thing. So appreciate that. Um, and I have Commissioner Keller.
Maybe we could, uh, dog tag, uh, Shayla's department too, so that we don't have to. Find the page.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Just to thank you to you and your staff. It's a lot of work and. You did a nice job. Thank you.
So with that, we'll look for a motion on five A. Enter the budget.
All right. Use of the hands, I'll make it. Mister Chair, I moved that we approved the Lion County tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five with the changes as. Denoted by Mister Foley.
Second.
Right, motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So five A motion passes five zero. Move on to, um, does anybody need to take a quick break? You know, you have something to eat. You're good. We're going to move. A recess to reconvene Mason Valley mosquito abatement district board. I'll read this the first time anyway. Public participation should be taken on any item until it's properly agenda is it's anticipated. The public participation will help this time. Though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. Board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, action item. But before the board takes any action. So we're at item number seven for possible action. Approve the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. For possible action, approve the Mason Valley mosquito abatement district tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Mister Foley.
Okay, John Foley, I'm kind of comfortable with the record. I'll take you back to page three fifty-seven. And, uh, and this. Is, uh, just takes care of mosquito abatement services in this area. They have a tax rate of eight point two cents. They do have a full high district manager and they had seasonal employees during some of. Just so you're aware. The manager has, is getting close to thirty years with the county. Is looking at retiring in a couple of weeks. And so not this budget request, but probably next year this time. There may be a request to give overlap staff because there is a lot of knowledge. That needs to pass on on all the different areas to report for. Just. A warning for the future. Any questions on this?
Question. And I'd like to talk to you about a couple of things on that too. Since it is my district. All right. But he had a chance to look at that. Any other comments from commissioners? Public comment. Now look for a motion for seven A.
Chairman Hocken, I'll make a motion to approve the Mason Valley mosquito abatement district tentative budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
All right, motion by Commissioner Jacobson. Do I have a second?
Second.
And second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Right, number eight, public participation. If you wish to do public participation, participation, you'll have three minutes. And you get a chance to do that. Same rules apply, state your name. And we will move on and adjourn to reconvene a central Lion County Vector Control District Board nine A. Same rules for public participation, if you wish to participate, please speak up now and state your name for the record, it will be given three minutes. Seeing no public participation, we will move on to number ten for possible action, approve the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. For possible action, approve the central Lion Vector Control District tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Well, go to that. Tab.
That's on page three sixty-four. This fund covers central line of county for vector control, which is actually a higher level of service than mosquito abatement, covers high flies and other pests, something like that. Uh, but tax rates warrant have since, there are no employees of vector control board. Uh, hires, independent contractors to come in and work with them, we have lost the head of. Of that to the board, this is a issue of us today, Tony Anderson, she's the bottom of the bottom. And work on that, um, so they're working through. That knowledge loss, but this budget does include that, the contracted services.
Any questions, Commissioner Henderson?
Just curiosity, uh, we don't have salaries, we have eight hundred bucks in benefits, what's that for?
So whenever we know the board.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions from the commission? Any from the public? Okay, seeing none. We will go ahead and uh. Request a motion on that for.
Mister Chair, I moved that we approved the central Lion Vector Control District tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Henderson, do I have a second?
Second.
And Commissioner Keller on the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Of participation can. They'll have an opportunity to speak at this time about the uh. Vector Control District. Seeing none, we will move on to adjourn to reconvene as Walker River Weed Control District Board and item twelve, public participation, do we have any public participation? Seeing none, we will move on to thirteen, possible action, approve the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, for possible action, approve the Walker River Weed Control District tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
This is on page three sixty-eight of your box here. Uh, it's in the Walker River area, just certain areas of it, uh, agricultural areas, there's a couple of things. There's a assessment of eight point four cents on land values. And. You have no permanent employees, they contract with the manager of the Mason Valley mosquito control district, ten thousand dollars a year to manage, seasonally employed, essentially never give a fuck. Uh, to provide the services in this. So this is the recommended budget for for that, so any further questions?
Questions? Seeing no questions from commissioners, do we have anything from the public, any input from the public? Ain't no public input, we will go ahead and look for a motion on thirteen A.
The move that we approve the Walker River Weed Control District tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
So. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Item fourteen, public participation, do we have any public participation to wrap up the uh. Uh, Walker River Weed Control District. Discussion. Ain't no public participation required in here or on Zoom. We will move down to adjourn. Reconvene as Silver Springs General Improvement District Board. Item fifteen, public participation. Seeing no public participation, we will move on to sixteen. For possible action, approve the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Sixteen A for possible action, approve the Silver Springs General Improvement District tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
Josh Foley, Lion County Council for the record, if we'll go to page four fifteen of your binder. It's a summary for the Silver Springs General Improvement District, uh, provides sewer service only in the uh, Silver Springs area, just a certain portion of it. You've got your operating costs in here, it's an enterprise fund, they do have a capital project which has been already awarded in this year, it's going to span fiscal years, we anticipate approximately one hundred and sixty-five thousand to be in the next fiscal year. And so that's in the budget for next year, in addition, we're looking at. Uh, cleaning out some of the sledge and ponds, we've done that about every five to ten years on those, and so the contracted services, that's going to be approximately one hundred fifty-five, one hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, um. Under the contract services, we got nine hundred thousand dollars budgeted.
I'm sorry, it's gonna be, that's gonna, not a hundred. I missed clothing, I was thinking it was a hundred, no, it's nine hundred thousand, thirty-six thousand of that is a contract with Silver Springs, which without it, nothing, the building, the rest of that is sludge.
To haul the sludge to to a long pond or wherever we talk to.
Wherever it is.
Okay.
Yes.
Nine hundred thousand is sludgerable.
So I'm buying a dump truck.
De-walderings.
Right on, deficit there. Uh. Any further comments then for the? Silver Springs. If not, then I will look for a public comment. No public comment in here or on Zoom, so we'll look for a motion on Silver Springs General Improvement District.
I move to approve the Silver Springs General Improvement District tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
All right. Motion by, motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Yeah, item seventeen, public participation. We have any public participation to wrap up the Silver Springs General Improvement District. Seeing none. We'll move recess to reconvene as Willow Creek General Improvement District Board. Uh, item eighteen, public participation. Seeing nobody on Zoom and nobody in the house, we will go ahead and. Move down to item nineteen for possible action, approve the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. For possible action, prove the Willow Creek General Improvement District tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Josh Foley, Lion County Council for the record, we're on page four twenty of the budget binder, very last section. And Willow Creek General Improvement District provides water and sewer services for small subdivision, just north of the city of Yerington. Uh, there is a tax rate of one point five six cents, no employees, but the contract says they need to operate the system. A very small sewer plant that are saved by the water. Any questions on that?
There doesn't seem to be any change on the contract then with the city of Yerington?
Uh, not currently, we've had some discussions back and forth and see.
Would we foresee that being this next budget year or maybe in the future, we haven't had a conversation?
We have had a number of conversations. At this point, I run into space next year.
Okay, right. Just wanted to know if we'd get some. Change order from you. Okay.
It's possible, but.
All right. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, on on the front page, you got depreciation at a hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars.
Yes.
And then on page four twenty-two, under depreciation of sixty-seven thousand. Eight. Eighty or five eighty-two.
Might take a five minute break.
Little off.
You want to take a five minute break?
Candy.
All right, all right, we're gonna take a five minute break. We'll get back at uh, one fifty-one. Or whenever.
That's okay, I I I still have some.
It's like when. Whenever. Josh. Where are we?
Okay, Josh Ford, Lion County Council for the record, on page. Four twenty-two, there is a question of why does the thirty-four thousand sixty-six dollars not match total depreciation on the cover page of a hundred and fourteen thousand six eighty-four? And that is because this fund has water and sewer, and because of their USDA grants, we have to account for those separately and treat them differently, and so. If you turn back to the next page on four twenty-three, you'll see the difference in depreciation of forty-seven thousand one hundred two. And I apologize, I shouldn't have now touched your head, but I'm getting a little running this part of the day.
Okay.
Wait, I want to make sure that adds up.
Please don't.
It does.
So you didn't make a mistake? Mister Henderson, Commissioner Henderson, you'll, Mister Foley, chocolate back.
Long as we're keeping score.
Well.
We're good.
I just, we just can't have that.
You didn't tell her to turn the page.
Lack of instructions.
All right, elected officials, we need this instruction.
So any further comments, questions for? Willow Creek. No public comment. Noted. So we will.
Chairman Hockney, I'll make a motion to approve the Willow Creek General Improvement District tentative budget for fiscal year. Two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item twenty, we will have the last public comment for Willow Creek. Any public comment? Seeing none. We will move to adjourn to reconvene as the Lion County Board of Commissioners. And we will move. To item twenty-one, Commissioner comments. You have anything we want to say, Commissioner Hendricks?
I just want to thank you and your staff, I can't imagine going through this process. With a different comptroller that's not as skilled as you are, it could be very painful and just really appreciate your talent and the work that you put into this.
Anything further?
Ditto.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, just the. Fact that we don't have a bunch of people, um. I'm angry. Have heard not heard one complaint from any employees, obviously you've reached out to department heads and gotten feedback and so kudos to you on that as well.
Yep. We're in agreement. You did a good job again. But we appreciate that, keep us out of trouble. Keep the money flowing in the right direction, so, thank you very much. This will be uh, the final public participation, anybody wishing to speak at this time. Be given three minutes and. I don't see anybody jumping up to do anything here or on Zoom, so I'm gonna move down to item twenty-three, do we have a closed session? No.
I don't see a DA, so we can't.
Well, they could always sneak in, uh, if that is the case, then I'm gonna adjourn at one fifty-five.
Ciao, guys.
Thank you all.